We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 3, 2021 to order at 2:01 PM. Councilmember Bearfield will be joining us via Zoom and all the other council members are present in the Boski Theater. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought with you. And I believe Esmeralda, do we have two registered speakers for this portion of the meeting or is that for the business section?
For the business session.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on a work session item? All right. Seeing no one, we will recess the regular session and convene work session with a report from the city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We do not have any changes to the agendas today, but we did provide you an updated IR at your place for the COVID-19 status report with some more up-to-date data from last week. And then from an employee recognition standpoint, I wanted to say a quick note of thank you to Deidre Emerson and the city team for getting the agenda out last week in my absence. Very much appreciated. And then allow for Jennifer Ritchie, our city attorney, to make a note about employee recognition as well.
Mayor and council, I almost hate to tell you all this, and I think some of you already know, Judith Benton, who has been with us since, for the city since 2008, and has done so many important things for this office, is going to be leaving our office in a couple of weeks to move up to Denver, Colorado to work at Denver Health. It's an amazing opportunity for her, but we will miss her. She has specialized in employment law, civil service. She's been a leader on our collective bargaining and meet-and-confer teams. She works now on planning, zoo, open records, and police and fire. And so we really appreciate all that she's done for our city. She's been a very valuable part of our city, and so I just wanted to give her that recognition, even though she hates recognition more than anything. So thank you, Judith, for everything you've done.
Judith, thank you for your years of dedicated service. You're going to be so missed, but I'm so excited for the future. And August is a great time to move to Colorado. Send some of that cold weather back on our way, but we're going to miss you so much and your great work. And lastly, our city secretary, I have some more news for us. Our city secretary recently notified our council that she will be retiring. And although we're going to miss her so much, I want to congratulate her on this exciting next phase. Esmeralda has served the Waco City Secretary's Office as Waco City Secretary since March 1, 2015. And before that was the Assistant City Secretary for eight years. Esmeralda's been very gracious to give us time to engage in a new search for a new city secretary, and is going to serve through February to make sure that we find the right person. But we're announcing this news now so that we can begin this search. We're going to have a big celebration for Esmeralda for her years of work here at the city. And we'll have more to say in the days ahead, but I want to say that I have to commend Esmeralda on your passion for the city and your genuine care for people, whether through your volunteer work throughout all of the city or your professional work. Your kindness always shines through. All of the good qualities, of all the good qualities that you have, I so appreciate about you is that when someone is in need, Esmeralda, whether it's someone has lost a family member, or someone is sick and in the hospital, or is going through a hard time, you make sure that that person or family member receives compassion. And I think this compassion in your heart embodies what you're about, and it embodies what this city stands for too. So you're a woman of faith, and I know that that light will continue to be a part of you in the days ahead with this bright future that you have. But know that you will be missed so much, and I'm so excited for the future. Some of the things that I recall from Esmeralda's work here that has been significant is being on the ground floor of a lot of the equity work that our city has done. And I'm so appreciative of that work. And then also really moving forward on some technological advances within the city from kind of a pencil-and-pen office to bringing the office into the 21st century in many ways, too. So thank you for those great, that great work. And I wanted to pause for a moment to see if other council members wanted to have a few words at this time, too.
I'll just jump in. Thanks, Esmeralda. Appreciate everything you've done since I've been on council. I came on just shortly after you did, but you've been very helpful in getting me in place, not just me, but all the council people here. And not only just in the administrative work you do in keeping the city in order, but also in records that we've been doing and all the different divisions that you run. It's not a city secretary, as maybe somebody sees the secretary, it's an office of administration that you keep all of us straight and keep the city straight. So you've done a great job there. In addition, as Mayor Meek said, the other stuff that you've done, I say other stuff, the other good things that you have been in the census, you were a leader in that, getting that going here in Central Texas, and brilliant work. And I appreciate your time on council and all the help you've been to me. Thanks, Es.
Yeah, Esmeralda, I am such a big fan of yours, you know that. And I think you are just such an asset to this council and to this city. I think particularly as a Latina woman in the space that you occupy, you embody something that we need to see in our community. And you are so competent and so compassionate, and you lead with both heart and mind. And so we're thankful for your work. We're thankful for your heart and excited to see what you have in store and sad to see you go. But we'll be cherishing the time we have with you these next several months.
Esmeralda, it was a real pleasure to serve with you on the Animal Welfare Advisory Board back 2012, 2014, when you were Assistant City Secretary, and I was a citizen volunteer. And that was just a real, a real fun time to be involved in city government and just to see your passion and everything that you brought to making that board and that issue, which was a real focal point for the city government at that time, to the table was really exciting. And I also am very grateful for the work you do with our elections and have done in the past. It was very helpful to have kind of someone shepherd a new candidate through, as you do for all candidates that come through your office. So grateful for all the good work you've done for the city and excited for the next phase in your journey. Thank you so much.
Esmeralda, as someone who, as Councilmember Vorderu just said, from a council perspective, you are our first face as we shepherd into the decision to run for office. And the fact that there was, on the other side of that application was a comforting smile, and someone who was willing to answer the questions and not, you know, shepherd us and walk us through that process was incredibly, we're grateful for that. And that brought a spirit of peace in that process because maybe that's a huge decision. But more than that, the city secretary's office is the first line of our organization. And yourself, with the staff that you've amassed, were the faces that people saw and sometimes the first impression of the city of Waco. So we're grateful for everything that you put into that spirit, the love that you've given our constituents and our community, your willingness to run with some maybe unusual ideas that certain particular council members have asked you to do, for the good of cities, you know, beginning conversations in community and walking me through that process. So I'm incredibly grateful. God bless you for serving under both myself and my mother. So, you know, you, that ought to get you a few steps closer in heaven, still alone. But we appreciate everything that you've done, and I'm so excited about the next season for you and what that looks like. And, you know, because as we know, as we get better and we get wiser, our next steps are oftentimes our best ones. So many blessings to you and your family. I mean, you know, we've gotten in touch with the whole Hudson crew. I mean, you know, Autumn was my birthday girl for a whole minute with her business. And so we appreciate everything that you and your entire family have given to this council and this city.
Esmeralda, you have been a pure joy to work with since I've been on council. You put your heart and strength into this job, and the work you've accomplished over the years speaks for itself. Please know you will be truly missed when you retire, but you've also earned this time for yourself and for your family. I truly hope that you will see how greatly you've impacted this current council, as I'm sure previous council members with your infectious smile and unending labor. It is evident you do not work, it is evident that you do work as unto the Lord, and that does not go unnoticed. I appreciate you so much, and I wish you nothing but the best in this next chapter of your life. You will be dearly missed, my friend, and I wish you all the best of luck.
And like I said, we're going to have a big party in the days ahead, and we'll have more kind words and celebration to come. And with that, I will turn it back over to our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. We have two informal reports on the agenda today. The IR 493 is our COVID status report. Appreciate the health team for bringing this back in light of our increasing COVID numbers in the community. And then the second IR is 494 is our third-quarter fiscal year financial report and Public Funds Investment Act quarterly report that highlight, obviously, a number of things, including in the general fund, our revenues projected to be $13 million more than budget, primarily driven by our sales tax increases, and expenditures projecting to be about $10 million in the general fund below our budget. Both of those on the right side of things. Water fund, of course, still on the revenue side continues to lag, both due to the winter storm and the efforts there, as well as a particularly rainy last couple of months. Summertime is the time in which, though, opportunities present themselves in Texas for water revenues to go up due to the lack of rain. So we'll see where we end the year in the fourth quarter. From an investment standpoint, the city's investment portfolio for the quarter yielded 0.205% compared to the 180-day Treasury yield of only 0.040%. And the city has generated investment earnings of $878,000 fiscal year to date. Public hearing wise, we have four...
City Manager Ford Holmes here. I just want to comment on this. I always feel obligated as an ex-banker to talk about this. Nice trends across the board for going through three quarters. It looks great. And I also want to thank Nick Sarpe, I think, puts this together. I don't know. Is Nick here today? Yeah, there he is. Nick, great job. You've added in this extra column that I've wanted. I've been warned about adding more columns is going to get too small to see the figures. So I'm just barely able to analyze this the way it is. But no, again, great, great figures in the general fund. Just flipping through the water utility fund, I panic about this every year that I've been on council. At the end of the third quarter, we're always way behind on revenues in water, but it's summertime. So everybody get out there and water your lawn and get those revenues up here. But it's, it looks like we'll still be behind a little bit in water this year for the reasons that you pointed out, Bradley. All the other things are on track as far as utilities, which you've already pointed out. And I'm encouraged, solid waste, I'm really encouraged by the convention services. I think we're seeing some great trends back there as we recover from COVID, and the hot tax goes, is going back up, and the merch sales are coming up. And we're holding the line on manage overhead there, too, as we kind of grow back into the, grow back into the revenue as the economy recovers. The great trend on the hot tax there on page 31. And again, the Ranger Hall of Fame and the zoo, both, which are kind of, and the golf course, all three, I'll say, sort of the cities, the city is involved in all three of those enterprises to make sure they're up to snuff for the tourists and the citizens. Particularly impressed by the zoo. And this is one of, that's kind of been my punching bag for the last couple of years. But this year, even in the face of the pandemic, where we thought, I think we had budgeted support of 2.9 or the summer routine, two and a half and 3 million, that we're showing ending the year of only like a million-two ahead there, 1.7 instead of 2.9. So I like the trends that are happening in sort of our, I don't know, what do you call those? The Ranger Hall, the ones that are sort of not, the zoo, the museum, and the CBB, and the golf course. I think everything seems to be getting back on track.
Councilmember, if you'll let me, I want to, I mean, I think the operation over there, the zoo is going very well. You also probably need the council to take a little bit of a victory lap there as well, because we rearranged the operating model at the zoo. And that has significantly been to our benefit, because many of those sales and those activities now we see on our revenue side for the city side. And that's going to really be beneficial looking down the road for the sustainability of our city-operated zoo. Thank you all for allowing us to work through that.
Great report. Thanks.
I wanted to jump in with the COVID-19 report and just highlight, I'm wearing this lovely, beautiful mask today because of the rise of Delta in our community and just the lethality of it and how infectious it is. So as an elected official in the state of Texas, I cannot say almost anything about COVID, but I can kindly encourage you to continue wearing your mask, to get vaccinated. Our rate of vaccination in our county is staying pretty stagnant, near 40%, but our cases are rising. And also wanted to shout out just the incredible team we have at the Public Health District. LaShonda Malry-Horn, Dr. Werner, Ashley Williams, Vedehu Shaw, Stephanie Alvi have been serving us tirelessly for months and months and months now. And so for us to honor their great work, we need to continue to do the practices that we know mitigate the spread of COVID-19 locally.
I also want to thank staff for the informal report 493. It is very concerning to see over the last two weeks that the number of reported cases has doubled, the number of deaths have doubled, the number of hospitalizations has doubled. However, the number of fully vaccinated people has only increased by half a percentage, which is concerning. So I am glad that we are getting out there to do more testing, to hopefully be more proactive in catching this disease. As Councilmember Palmer said, the Delta variant is a lot more lethal and more infectious. And so I'm glad we've been proactive as a health district to get out there and really have an opportunity to work with our communities. As I look at the report and I look at the testing locations and we're working with the testing vendor, you know, I would definitely encourage staff and health district to really switch up where we are having testing sites set. You know, last time, I think we had them at two or three set locations. And over the days and weeks, we saw the numbers of people being tested decrease drastically. So I would appreciate some more testing sites and more locations of the core of our cities, more specifically, South Waco. And I would be an advocate for that. So I would hope that we can make that happen. As far as informal report 494, I just want to piggyback a little bit about Councilmember Holmes and the great report that we had. Just looking at the report, our revenues are at 94% of budget with still an entire quarter to go. Our sales tax are at 96% to budget with still an entire quarter to go. Cameron Park Zoo, it's already at 109% to budget with still an entire quarter to go. And then as I look at, you know, we might think, well, this is just having to deal that we're getting out of COVID. We were getting out of COVID, and hopefully those things are moving in the positive direction. But if you also look at just the standard services that the city provides this time versus the same time last year, our revenues are higher in the general fund, wastewater utility, WMAR, solid waste, airport, and Texas Ranger Hall of Fame. So kudos to the entire staff, our city manager's staff, but also to our directors of those various departments and their staff for just working tirelessly, effortlessly, and seamlessly to get us back on track. And so we appreciate that. And overall, the informal report 494, such a great report that was provided to us. So thank you.
Yeah, following up on my fellow council members' COVID-19 comments, if there are any residents of the city of Waco that are listening and are on the fence about getting the vaccine, there's been some numbers recently that have shown how effective it is in the face of the Delta variant. The Texas Tribune had reported that of all the deaths in the state of Texas since February, 99.5% of those deaths were among the unvaccinated. Further in the waves of the Delta that have gone through in July, they're showing about 97% plus of the hospitalized are unvaccinated. So the vaccine remains our best defense against this, and we really need to get these shots in as many arms. So if you're considering it, consider it's keeping you out of the hospital if you're on the fence.
And as I'm the dramatic one by nature, let's just be clear. And for the folks who are hesitant in it, it is very probable that people who are vaccinated will, can still be COVID-positive, can still transmit the virus as a carrier. But the thing, as Councilmember Vorderu just mentioned, is their hospitality rates are considerably lower, as well as their fatality rates. So it's not that the vaccinated people cannot be COVID-positive and/or transmit the virus. It's that the likelihood that they will be hospitalized or die is decreased tremendously. So we, you know, we're not telling you anything that anyone else hasn't said. It's just that we are encouraging as many of our Waycoans and McClinney County residents to be vaccinated as possible. It's the, it's a first line of defense. I saw something that mentioned the, and I was speaking with my children, that the contagiousness of this variant of COVID was much like the spread of chickenpox. And my son said, what's that? And there's reason for that. There was a shot that we, that they got that prohibited them from having chickenpox. So, you know, while, you know, all I'm going to say is I encourage people to continue to trust the science and, you know, protect yourself and your neighbor.
I'll just echo that and really segue. We're going to have a press conference tomorrow at 1:30 to address this. There'll be healthcare leaders on the call, as well as, in addition to some residents, some educators, and even a pastor in the central Texas area who had not gotten the vaccine and a couple of weeks ago, almost died from COVID and nearly passed away and has regret, has said that he wishes that he would have gotten that vaccine. So we'll have some powerful testimony, as well as a good conversation with healthcare providers from our community to discuss the status of things here in Waco, some science from local doctors that we trust, as well as some community members. So I'm looking forward to that and echo the wisdom of my council members that they've shared. And lastly, we'll just also commend staff. I think Hector very nicely pointed out the performance of this budget online item, 494. So thank you for a great report, staff, and look forward to having more discussions about that in the days ahead.
Thanks, Mayor and council. We do have four public hearings on the agenda today. Clint Peters, our Development Services Director, will cover those here in a few minutes during the work session. Resolutions wise, we have 19 on the agenda, and I'll be highlighting just a few. The first is Resolution 506, which sets the public hearing to receive comments on the proposed operating budget and capital improvements program for 2021, 2022 for August 31 at 6:00 PM. So those wanting to provide feedback, please mark that date down on your calendars. Traditionally, we do not get a lot of public input at that meeting, and it would be nice to see some folks. Next, I'd like to highlight Resolution 507, which amends the FY 2020, 2021 operating budget and CIP in several funds, and amends Resolution 2021 478 to correct an error in the decreased amount for the Lake Brazos Dam project. Details of the proposed amendments are included in Exhibit A of the attachment. I don't think they'll surprise the council. Some of the highlights include increased sales tax revenue by $5 million, which we'll be able to use for capital projects improvements, including one being Lions Park. It also returns revenues and expenditures to the general fund and the health district fund in light of grant funding we received to help pay for the Luminaire Technology Solution that we're using for our vaccine clinic registration. It establishes a project budget for the zoo expansion within the city's financial records and accomplishes a number of other amendments. Resolutions 510 and 511 ratifies the approvals of rehabilitation and lead abatement deferred loans funded by the Housing and Urban Development Department from federal government for six houses here in Waco. These are housing rehabs and repairs that are made under the grants, which include interior and exterior lead abatement projects, plumbing, electrical upgrades, new windows and doors, painting, flooring, HVAC improvements, and more. We're certainly very pleased to have these six residences on the agenda today and very appreciative of all the federal dollars that have flowed over the past few years for housing rehabilitation into Waco.
City Manager Ford, if I may comment on these two, Resolutions 510 and 511, I just want to really just talk about the great work that the city inspections team also shows how our departments work together to making sure that our neighbors and our constituents are taken care of in their homes. I mean, just between these two resolutions, we are providing over $350,000 in forgivable loans for rehab and lead abatement, which I think it's also very important that neighbors that have been living in their home 20, 30, 40 years are able to stay in their home without having to leave it because it's dilapidated. And also to talk about that it preserves the very existence and the culture and the characteristics of the neighborhood when we're allowed, when neighbors are allowed to stay in their home and refix them. And just, it brings up the look of the entire neighborhood as well. So I just really want to congratulate Pat and Pat staff on their backs for these two resolutions that are coming before us. And I look forward to what's to come in the future as well. So thank you.
I want to jump in here as well. The majority of these properties are in District 4. And as this council is well aware, I continue to talk about the importance of housing because so many of our neighbors, of my neighbors, are living in homes that were built prior to the 1970s that have toxic lead-based paint in them that result in a wide array of health issues. They're living in homes without air conditioning, without windows that open, with roofs that are caving in. And like Mayor Protem Sabido said, this $350,000 will change not only the livelihood and quality of life of these individual families, but it strengthens these neighborhoods, which is why I really hope to see as we move through our American Rescue Plan money and finalize our budget for the upcoming fiscal year, we really prioritize more money like this. Helping five or six families is huge, but we know we have 5,000 families, 6,000 families in our community that could benefit from these kinds of services. So want to really continue to amplify just the phenomenal work that our housing department is doing.
I just want to honor the housing department, who has worked so creatively to optimize and seek out federal dollars and develop smart programs over the last many years. Waco's award of this lead grant that is coming to fruition here was not a role, was not an act of luck. It was an act of strategy. It was an act of a determined staff and some council members who worked really hard to go and procure those dollars and bring them back to our community. And I think that I just, I'm grateful for that. And do also look forward to the continued discussions that we can have, not only on these programs, but other housing projects that we can have in the days ahead. So thank you to staff. I see Renisha there, and you're to Galen. I don't know if he's here, but I really appreciate the work that they've done on these two issues, these two items.
Thanks, Mayor and council. If you'll humor me, I'll give you an example. At least one of these came out of a code compliance inspection, one of these houses that did a rehab project. And I think it really speaks to the code compliance approach as opposed necessarily to the code enforcement approach. And to be able to line up housing and the code compliance team with some resources is very beneficial. So definitely appreciate council's comments on this item. On Resolution 519, wanted to highlight this one as well. It approves two interlocal agreements with our partner, McClinney County, for chip sealing of Mazonic Road, Our Way Road, and West Warren Road for a total cost to the city of an estimated $29,000. This is an ongoing cooperative effort between the city and the county. And certainly, we all agree it's in the best interest of the city and our residents when we can cooperate and share resources in a very efficient manner. Appreciate our friends at McClinney County for taking that approach. Resolutions 521, 22, and 23, I wanted to highlight kind of... for taking that approach. Resolutions 521, 22, and 23, I wanted to highlight kind of as a group, their separate advanced funding agreements with the state of Texas for highway safety improvement program grants on three projects. I think this was highlighted perhaps earlier in the paper today, if you wanna read more about it. But it documents three projects, the addition of a traffic signal at New Road and Old Robinson Road, installation of a new metal beam guard fence along Primrose between 12th Street and North Robinson Drive, as well as much-needed installation of pedestrian curb ramps and continuous sidewalk along North 19th Street. The city will be responsible for 100% of the cost of design, right-of-way acquisition, and utility relocation for the three projects. And then the 10% local match for construction costs was waived on both the New Road and Primrose projects, meaning that 100% of construction costs will be covered by the federal funding for those two projects. We will still have the 10% match on the North 19th Street, though.
City Manager Ford, if I may, thank you for bringing these. I'm very excited about these three projects, especially Resolution 521. After the concerns, numerous concerns that I've heard over the traffic on the corner of Old Robinson and New Road as University High School lets out, and sometimes it could be, well, it is a dangerous intersection, numerous parents have reached out to talk about the concerns that they have, wrecks that they've experienced, there are wrecks that they've seen. I'm so glad to see that this is coming to fruition. The stoplight is being installed. Councilmember Bearfield is saying amen, because she's one of my parents that I've heard from us with. And so Assistant City Manager Kane, thank you, because I think half of my emails to you will now be dissolved and gone away with with this resolution being passed. So I'm excited to see this. So thank you so much.
All right. Ordinance-wise on the agenda today, we have three ordinance, 2021 525 is a first reading that approves a boundary agreement with the city of Beverly Hills to alter the boundary limits of the city of Waco and the city of Beverly Hills. Ordinance 526 amends Article III, Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances to provide that permit fees shall be doubled if work for which a permit is required under Article III is started prior to obtaining the permit. This involves work, or the chapter on streets, sidewalks, and other places. And then ordinance 527 is a second reading, and if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
I actually had one question, and I saw, there it is, 2021 515, which was the Texas Anti-Gang Center, Bradley, is that, I didn't know if you wanted to give a little highlight on that as well. Really thankful for the collaborative work that's being done under this grant program, and thought that this might be an opportunity to kind of, and if not now, then maybe soon, we could have a discussion on.
Sure. No, I wouldn't mind. I'd actually ask if Chief Victorian might wanna come to the, to the mic. I think the TAG, for those that aren't familiar, Texas Anti-Gang, the TAG Center is a state grant that we got in 2021. That's really helped to facilitate some really significant results. The item on the agenda today is an extension of the lease agreement. But Chief, anything you wanna add about TAG?
Yeah, so thank you very much for having me. Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you that don't know, the TAG originated, the building was officially opened in October of 2020, and it allows for us to co-locate in order to efficiently and effectively cooperate and collaborate with intelligence and investigatory and operational activities with law enforcement agencies across our county, including Waco PD, Bell, and McLennan County Sheriff's Office, DPS, ATF, and the United States Marshals. And so far this year, enforcement operations resulted in arrests of 117 gang members for felony offenses and 306 felony cases. We have successfully had 11 convictions, felony convictions, from those arrests and charges, and we have seized over 106 weapons, which makes our city a lot safer. In the last four months, we've collaborated and conducted a total of nine organizational, organized gang suppression operations. This included undercover operations and marked enforcement, and we targeted for the problem areas based on intelligence to maximize our enforcement efforts. And as a result of these operations, we made arrests for crimes involving discharge of firearms, I'm sorry, crimes involving discharge of firearms, shooting, and shots fired actually decreased during this four-month operation, this operational period, the operational period between April 12th and May the 9th. So that's a little history on TAG and a few of the successes that we've had so far this year.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chief. I just, I appreciate that highlight. I think that this illustrates, you know, again, I feel like a word for Waco right now is strategic. And I think that being able to work strategically across institutional lines with other partnerships that you referenced, the Sheriff's Department, the U.S. Marshals, and others, to really collaborate and make sure that we are talking to one another is going to lead to the better results that you referenced. And so I'm thankful for that, and I want our community to know about that as we approve this lease extension. This lease extension feels administrative in one sense, but it really is a representation that this council, that this community, this city, our police department takes crime seriously, as we are seeing in Waco, as across the country, a rise in violent crime. And we are working strategically and effectively to address that. And I'm so thankful for you and your work, and I'm happy to extend this lease, given the strategic efforts that we're seeing to make sure that Waco is a safer city and getting guns off the street. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor.
Okay, so the consent agenda includes Resolution 2021 506 through 2021 524. Are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2021 506 through 2021 524. The next item on the agenda is Work Session 2021 495. Bradley, would you please introduce that?
Sure, Mayor. We have Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, joining us here at the table to give us an overview of the four planning public hearing items.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we do have the four public hearings tonight. The first one being an abandonment of a portion of South 14th Street, right-of-way between Park Avenue and Interstate 35. This is, the property owner is, owns the Super 8 Motel on one side, and then there's some vacant property on the other side of 14th Street, and they would like to consolidate all that property into one. And you can see the South 14th Street here and Interstate with all the construction happening adjacent to it. This is the I-35 expansion schematic, and you can see, let me get my bearings here, 14th Street right here is in that green color. So it's actually, Tech dot is actually planning to remove that section of the street with the project. So it does make sense to abandon this right-of-way, so all that property can be consolidated on both sides. You'll still have access from Park to the Interstate with these purple colors, or we'll, where they'll add new points of access to the frontage road of I-35. And here's a picture of it. You can see this little section right here is what we're talking about. Here's a hotel. And then here's the other side where the vacant property is, and you can see the construction happening there. Plan Commission did recommend approval. We had no responses from the eighteen notices. We do have one condition, there are a couple of utilities in that area, so we will need to retain easements, or those utilities can be relocated at the developer's expense.
Going back to that, you might have mentioned this, but does the developer have plans for that property, or is there a specific reason for the abandonment?
So it's really the, to go back to the, no problem. It's really to, you can see, consolidate their property. I think they wanna have it potentially for some amenities for the hotel. The next public hearing, 503, is to consider an ordinance creating a planning development by rezoning from C2 to planning development for an express exterior truck wash facility. This is a seven-acre property near the intersection of New Road and I-35. You have the Equipment Depot here on the corner. There's a new apartment complex here, and then University High here. And then on the other side of Interstate, you have the Flying J Truck Stop, the new QT convenience store that has fueling for trucks, and then some other hotel and restaurant uses. This is mixed-use flex, which is in our land use plan, which is commercial uses, designed for commercial and office uses. And then you see the zoning, C2. Currently, the C2 zoning does not allow for this type of facility, so that's why they are requesting the zone change to a planning development. That gives the flexibility of use while still having some quality standards for this type of development. They are leaving a piece out of this property for C2 development, so this little portion right here will stay C2 zoning. So here's their site plan. I-35 is at the bottom here. Here's the frontage road. Here's the property. Here's the truck wash facility here. This darker color here is where the portion of the property that will remain C2. The applicant has been working closely with our traffic department and Tech dot. The main concern on this development was the traffic concerns. They did a traffic study, which yielded some recommendations that staff, city staff and Tech dot staff gave to the developer, and they're on board with. And I just wanted to go over a couple of those. So there will be, so northbound frontage road, I-35 frontage road, there will be a right turn into the property. There will be a D cell lane there as well. And then on the other side, there will be an exit-only. And so the northbound traffic will flow through the property this way and out this way. They do have a connection point to New Road, which will be for southbound trucks coming to the facility, which will come through the intersection, turn on New Road, and then turn right in only to this driveway that will connect into the facility for them to circulate back out to 35. So no, there will be no exit traffic to New Road, and then also no right turns on the New Road. So all the motion here for vehicles will be right in only. And those were concerns from staff and Tech dot, but I think we've worked it out with the traffic flow, with the design of the project. The other issue, it's, this is the apartment complex here, and you can see, you can see better from the aerial. They actually have a connection point back to the frontage road, and you can see that road has already been built there. This is the Thanksgiving Park, what we call the Thanksgiving Park track and land that is commercial, that will have future development. And so with that development, there is a street plan that will connect adjacent to where they're wanting to put their drive. And so what we've worked out is, they can go ahead and put this right in now, but at the time of this street construction, this drive will need to go away, because we don't want two drives right next to each other that will conflict. Here's the look at, look of the elevation of the building. It's got a modern look, similar to what you see in new car dealerships. The process, the technology they use from their narrative reduces the wash time from about 30 minutes down to about 10 minutes, and so they're able to circulate more vehicles through there. So you're not gonna have as much queuing that you would see other facilities similar to this. And then here's the property. This is looking back towards the intersection, Equipment Depot in the background. And then you can see the rear of the property where the apartments are across there.
Clint, they gave a rendering of the Landmark Express Truck Wash sign, including a restaurant that I don't know if it's fictional or if it's real. Waffles R Us, hot waffles and fried chicken. Is that in the mix, like as a combo, or is that just like if they get a tenant in that other area?
Yeah, I think that's a fictional.
Okay, okay. That's just kind of a rendering of what a sign from another restaurant or business might look.
Right, because they will share some of those access points to that remainder lot that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Clint, do we know the hours of the business?
So we do not know, they have not decided on their hours. It will not be a 24/7 operation, and it will have, be staffed at all times. So this is the conceptual plan. If this is approved by council, they have to come back with their final plans, and that'll be something that we'll fine-tune when it comes in with their final plans.
And I only ask because, you know, as Mayor Protem Sabido mentioned, the, in his highlight about the signal light, you know, that you are approaching a school zone right at that New Road intersection. I just wanted to, you know, see if that was in play with the traffic analysis. I'm sure it was. But if it's after, you know, if it opens after school begins, there wouldn't be any backups or anything under the, under I-35?
Sure.
So I was wondering.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that's included in their final PUD plan that has that hours operation. That was something that came up during the concept plan and was considered in the traffic study.
Hey Clint, I will say, I do have a few concerns about this project. First being, you know, I know it would make sense since Flying Jays and other trucks, truck stops are nearby this location. What I am concerned about, and you alluded to this a little bit in your presentation, but I'm just wanna ask more questions, is in the narrative that was provided by the applicant, they put in there that there wouldn't be any traffic disturbance or traffic changes. However, staff is saying that traffic will be changed. So with these recommendations that are coming from city staff and Tech dot staff, is the applicant okay with those changes as far as the traffic goes and the lights and, and streets and infrastructure that they're gonna have to place in there?
Yes, and yes, we've talked with that. They're aware of all, and that's what we have on the screen right here, is all the conditions of approval that include all those required improvements, traffic improvements, and they are okay with those.
And I know you said that there was one entrance off of the I-35 frontage road and one exit off, onto the I-35 frontage road. You said there was gonna be an entrance off of New Road, but did you say no left turns were gonna be allowed, or no right turns were gonna be allowed?
Both.
Okay.
So, so all the exits from this will be back onto the frontage road. So let me go back to the site plan. So if you're coming southbound, you know, from the north, you would exit New Road, come, you know, go under the Interstate through that intersection, turn right into this driveway here, and then circulate through the facility, and then back out to the frontage road.
Okay.
It's gonna be designed where you cannot circulate back out to New Road, or turn right onto New Road.
Perfect. So the, off of New Road is just the entrance to the location itself only?
Correct.
But trucks can turn either left or right off of New Road into the location, correct?
Just right.
Just right. So they can't turn left?
Yeah, the idea is you don't want any trucks going back towards the school.
Perfect. Also, in the agenda packet, it said that a lot of the infrastructure, like the wastewater, et cetera, things like that, was not in play yet. But I'm assuming that the infrastructure will even have to be put in place even before they begin to develop this, correct?
Correct. And we do have a condition as part of our recommendation about plating the property.
Okay.
Before any type of building permits would be issued. That's right, the number two. And that does include an off-site sewer extension and easement dedication.
Who would be responsible for making sure that this infrastructure is in place before it, they begin to build?
So the way our subdivision ordinance works is the, if there's required extensions of infrastructure, those are, it's considered a major plat, and those would have to come through Plan Commission and Council for approval, including their construction plans. And then before we actually record the plat, the infrastructure has to be in place before we record the plat.
So the developer, the company, would be responsible for making sure that the infrastructure's there even before it comes to Plan Commission or Council for the plat?
Correct. It's their responsibility to put it in. And then, and then, you know, the final stage is, is the building permit. So no building permits can be issued until all, until the property's plat. So no building permits can be issued until all, until the property is plated and all the infrastructure is in place.
And what type, Councilmember Bearfield mentioned this, but there's a school not too far from there and there's also some apartment complexes down there, right, right across the street or right on the same side of the street as this complex. What type of impact are we thinking this is going to have on those apartment complexes, neighbors that live there in that area?
So from a traffic standpoint, we feel like we've mitigated all the impacts through these conditions.
What about, I know we haven't said hours yet, but it appeared by the packet that, or the narrative that the applicant submitted that truck washes are usually done early in the morning, before 7:00 AM or late at night. So does that mean that people in the area or in the neighborhood will be hearing loud noises and water going and horns honking at 10, 11 o'clock at night?
My understanding is no, that it will be staffed. So, because that's something we brought up to them, you know, will, there'll be trucks queuing, you know, wait, you know, with their engines running, waiting to get into the facility. And that's not the way it's operated. They'll have it fenced off where people can't get into the property when they're closed. And then when it's open, they'll have it staffed and that will be monitored. But that, that is something that we'll need to verify and get, make sure with the final PUD plan that all that's mitigated, you know, from a noise standpoint, from lighting, all that, that it's not having any impact on the adjacent properties.
And, and thank you for that. And as far as the rezoning, tell me again, what's the logic of leaving the C2 zoning in place? Like, why not just change it all to multi-flex use?
So, so right now, C, so C2 allows a mix of commercial uses, you know, anything from restaurants to general retail office. They don't know what they're going to do with that development, with that piece yet, even though they showed the waffle sign on there. But, so they, they didn't want to rezone that because they don't know how it's going to develop. So they have a specific use for the truck facility that needs a zone change, but they anticipate whatever is going to develop in that acreage that's being left out will fit in the, be a permitted use in the C2 zoning. So there's not a necessity to change that zoning on that piece. And you can see that the majority of that area is all C2 zoning on both sides, where we have the new entertainment venues and further down into the Thanksgiving Park property.
Okay. Yeah, I completely get that today we're just talking about the zoning change. You know, I do have a lot of questions, as you can tell, as we move forward with this project. I would like to just, making sure that we are thoughtfully thinking about the impact that it'll have in that area, especially with the school and those apartment complexes around that area. As far as changing the zoning, I'm okay with that right now, but I do have some concerns and some questions as, as we move forward with the project. Thank you.
We did mail out 15 notices on this one and had zero returned. And the Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 10 to 0 with all the conditions that you see here that we've talked about.
Clint, I'm sorry, real quick, the first one, the abandonment of the street. Are you done with this one? Sorry?
No, I'm finished.
Okay, is that in the university overlay, the Motel 8 or Super 8, sorry?
Um.
This?
That's a good question.
So any reconstruct or redevelopment?
Yes, that's in the overlay.
Any redevelopment or construction on that would trigger overlay requirements, is that right?
Correct.
So as long as they leave this just as is and don't touch that street, there wouldn't be any overlay requirements. But should they tear up the street and pave it or make it a parking lot or something like that, that would trigger overlay requirements, correct?
Correct, correct.
All right, thank you.
Sure. All right. Public hearing 504 is a zone change request from Betsy Ferguson on behalf of DBB Investments LLC at 1801 South H Street. This is a zone change from '02 to '03. This is in the Baylor neighborhood in District 2. This is a property right at the corner of 8th and Bagby, just on the edge of Baylor Campus. You can see this is, again, an area of mixed use flex. And then you do see most of the zoning there is '02. There is some '03 in the area, but most of it's '02. What they would like to do, the reason for this rezoning, this is a single family house right now, but, which '02 does allow. '02 allows from all the way from a single family up to multifamily and then office uses, and then '03 introduces some limited commercial uses that has hour operation limitations from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on commercial uses. And then it, '03 takes out the multifamily portion of it. But the owner would like to do, convert this house into a limited commercial use that would be allowed in '03, similar to what you see with the common grounds and heritage ice cream on the other side, edge of campus. There are some challenges with that, that, you know, if this zoning is approved, they will need to meet all the requirements, you know, for building code and parking and site development. But we felt like this location on the edge of campus and the '03 providing some other uses that would create some synergy with the campus, that we felt like this was a good zone change here at this property. We did mail out 26 notices on this and had one in opposition, and mainly concerned about, you know, impact of parking in, in, at some of the housing around there. And like I said, before they could operate or get an approval to transition that building to a commercial use, they would have to meet all the site requirements for commercial uses.
Clint, I have a threshold question on this one. Was Baylor noticed on this? Do they own any property within 200 feet?
I believe they, I believe they own the catty corner property, but we'll verify that before tonight.
They need to fill an affidavit out. I apologize for not being raised before.
Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 10 to 0. You see the recommendation there. And then our last public hearing.
Clint, I'm sorry, one more question on this one. Sorry about that. So I know you mentioned this and I know the parking has, is being discussed. What are the parking requirements for this type of zone change? And is there room on the property to make that happen?
So again, it depends on exactly, you know, what they end up redeveloping that house for. But for general office, it's one space for 300 square feet. And then retail is one for 200. And then restaurant is one to 100. So it's specific to the use, it's okay. There is some ability to park it on site. And then they are, they have, have discussions with some of the surrounding property owners for some remote parking, but again, that, it's going to be dictated by the, the use.
Sure, okay, perfect, thank you.
And then our last public hearing is 505, which is our residential design standards that we discussed with the council back in March. We've been working on this since then with numerous stakeholders. We've presented it to neighborhood associations, our development committee that meets once a month, and then also our Heart of Texas Builders Association. And what you have in front of you tonight is a final product of all that input. And we feel like it's tracked a good balance with meeting the intent when we started. And then we did get a lot of good input from the Home Builders Association that will help us avoid some unintended consequences that we might have had without some of the input that they gave us. So we felt like it was a good process and we feel like the ordinance that we're bringing to you today meets, meets everybody's concerns on what we're trying to accomplish with that. So I did want to go through, through it and show you all the changes that we have from when we originally presented the concepts to you back in March, real quickly. So one of the things that, when we first started looking at this, you know, a lot of the concern was infill development. How, how is this new residential development, you know, impacting surrounding neighborhoods that have been built in? And that included both single family and duplex. So we originally had the ordinance written in a way that the regulations applied to all single family, single detached and attached and then duplexes. But really, the concern was when, especially with the duplexes, where when you're mixing duplex in a block face that has all single family homes, making sure those are compatible with those single family homes. And so I don't think, when we, when our discussions with the home builders was, there was concern, well, if you're just developing all brand new duplex development, do you really need to have those standards in place? It really doesn't need to be fine tuned to the, the impact of where you have a mix of duplex and single family. So that application of regulations was revised to just include all single family and then single family attached in duplexes where you have single family detached in that same block face. So where you're putting a duplex or a townhouse in the middle of a block with a bunch of single family, that your, that these standards would apply. But it wasn't applied to a brand new development that's all duplex. And that, that was a request of the Home Builders Association we felt like was fair. And then the Plan Commission also had a lot of discussion on this. We had two or three work sessions with them. And, and they felt like in those areas where the zoning is not, is not currently residential zoning, that those areas should not have to abide by these rules too. So they added a statement in there that located in residential zoning districts. So those areas that are like office zoning that you have around Baylor and some of the areas around downtown, right around downtown, where you already have a mix of uses, that really wasn't what we're trying to get at with these standards. So that's the application of regulations. So getting into the, the different regulations, the first thing that, the first portion of it, section of it deals with building scale and massing. We talked about having similar form characteristics. These are your height, your width, your roof pitch, being compatible with the existing homes in a, in a block face. So these standards apply where you have block faces that are built out at least 75%, that they're within 20% of the building location on the lot, which would be your setbacks, your height, width and roof pitch. And you can see some examples there, the bottom. This is an example where you have a house that's out of scale with the rest of the block. And then the bottom, you have a house that's in scale with the rest of the block and fill. The, the home builders brought up the point, well, what about those block faces where you have a mix of one story and two story houses? You know, it's going to be hard to apply a 20% standard and that was a good point. So we added an exemption where if you, for, just for the height, if you have a mix of single story and two story homes, the height requirement does not apply. And then we just added some clarifying language in there about fractions and rounding to the nearest whole number for purposes of determined compliance with this section. The next section is dealing with the location of parking. We have standards where there's, where you have a home that has no garage. We are not requiring that homes have garages, but where you have no garages, the driveway parking shall be either on the side of the house or the rear of the house. We, originally, we did have some exceptions in there about narrow lots. So a lot that was 50 foot wide or less and had no access to the alley were exempt from that standard of having the parking in the front and the rear. But the parking area in the front could not take up more than 50% of the home. Currently, it's 75%. So that's, that's still the case, but we did add some clarifying language in there about access to the alley. We put improved alley because there was concern about, there are a lot of our, especially in interior part of the city, where we have alley right of ways, but there's not actually an alley there. And so there was concern, well, you know, if I'm 50 foot and there's no alley there, you're going to require me to build alley. And that, that again, wasn't the intent, so we just added some clarifying language in that. The garages, so if you do have a garage, there's requirements for side load garages. Side load, you can see at the bottom right, that you have some sort of architectural elements on the facade. And then where you have a front load garage, that that front load doesn't take up more than 50% of your facade and protrude no more than 10 feet from the front facade. And we, we added some language in there, dealing with, again, clarifying that for the garages, that the measurement would just be for the garage door. Again, you know, that's the, the main point. You don't want the garage door, the garage to be the dominant architectural feature of it. So the measurement of that 50% would just be for the garage door. We also put in some exemptions where you have a two story home, garage on the first floor, and then you have living space above the garage. Again, that makes it where the, the main feature of the home is not the garage. So we had that situation, there is an exemption for that. And then on, where this doesn't come up much, but there are some lots, legally plated lots that are under 50 feet. And if you start, like a, for example, a 40 foot lot, if you start doing the math on that, you take off 10 feet for the side setbacks, you're down to a 30 foot wide home and then 50% of that, that 15 foot garage, can't, can't get a two car garage in there. So we did put an exemption in there for front load for illegally plated lots under 50 feet, that they can go over that 50% of the front facade. But they have to have at least two of the architectural features listed in the, in the standards for the section. And we talked about that. So those were the changes we made for location of parking. Architectural elements, again, this was that section meant to make sure we don't have blank facades, break up those blank facades. And so the ordinance has a two foot by 10 foot offset for every 30 foot of the front facade. And then you have to have inclusion of these architectural elements and there's a laundry list of them. You can see a good example, bad example, vice versa, bad example, good example. And then there was no changes to that section. And then the last section is dealing with more of the greenfield development where you're trying to mix up your elevations, where you don't have the same front elevation on a bunch of houses on the same block face. So there's a requirement in a six lot pattern. So you have your subject property there. It has to have three of these elements that are different than the other six houses in this pattern. And those elements, there's, again, a laundry list of them. And you can choose three of those. And we did, there's a lot of discussion about what about if, if, that we had a bunch of extra landscaping, could that be one of the, the elements? And we felt like that was a good addition to those elements. So if they add extra landscaping, other than what was, what's required, which is, you know, grass and a tree, if they put a bunch of beds in, that that can count as one of their, one of their elements. And then we added.
What, Clint?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my, I guess my question is, you said extra landscaping. What, one thing extra, two thing? I mean, how does that make real differentiation? So if you've got a tree and a shrub, and I have a tree, a shrub and a flower bed, I'm good?
So it would be adding some flower beds and that would be one, you could count as one of your element. You have to have three, so you'd have to have two other in there. But it, you know, it would need to be more than a shrub. It would need to be some beds along the front edge.
This allows for what kind of, what is this substitute for we proposed?
It doesn't substitute anything, it just adds that as an element. So you can pick, pick one of, you can pick the landscaping, extra landscaping as one of your three required elements that vary from the other properties in the block.
Okay, and the previous things that we were, what's the list?
So the laundry list, change in roof line, roof pitch. You can include, exclude front porches, front entry, difference in the number of roof dormers, change in the garage bays, change in exterior materials. We can't require that it has to be a certain material, but it can count if you, if you have different materials between the homes. Recession garage, addition of bay windows, difference in the number of windows. And then the, the extra one would be the landscaping.
Well, and I guess my concern is that, you know, I, I, these are all fundamental physical changes to the house or to the property, right?
Yeah.
And the landscaping is, is, while it's changing the feature, that doesn't stop you from having, you know, stepford homes. So it's not the same house back to back to back.
And it could die.
I mean, with these.
Could die in a year.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And I, and I think that's, you know, that, that was a request of the home builders and it, and we felt like, because it's just one element of the three. And it, and it's, you know, addition to what is normally required, that that was unacceptable.
Help me understand from the home builders too on this, like, because I want to... Help me understand from the home builders too on this, like, because I want it to be reasonable, but my question is, was it a concern that the cost would go up if they had to do three versus two? I mean, what is the-
I think, I think the points they made is when you're driving down the street and you're looking at a house, and you're, you're looking at it, you know, you know, if that's all different house, the same house next to each other, and they all have different landscaping, that, that provides visual differences from the adjacent properties, that that is an element of that facade that looks different from your neighbor.
But do you know why it was important to them to, I, I would assume that they had a, took issue with this list as it was, for them to request landscaping as a alternative? So I'm, I'm curious, like, what was the issue they took? Because I, I hear Councilmember Bearfield's point, and I'd tend to agree, but I, I want to hear their perspective on it. And I'm just confused on, I guess, what they, I, I want to know why they took issue with the list as it was.
So they didn't, they didn't have any issues with the list that we had, they just felt like that was something that needed to be added to it as a potential-
So if we, if, if this council were concerned that landscape could die in a year, and therefore we're not accomplishing as much of our goal, and took that off, would they be frustrated?
I, I, I can't speak for them. I mean, we, so, you know, we, we met with them, they gave us input, we adjusted the ordinance based on that input, sent it back to them, and they, they felt comfortable with the way we had it drafted. I, I don't know.
And, and can you allow me to add a question in that?
Sure.
So when we say landscaping, because I, there's some, there's some understanding, right? Because I know when I lived in another city, you know, we had to have a tree, right? You know, oxygen, sustainability, all that good, you know, greenness. And, and, but landscaping is not that specifically. Do we, is it already a requirement that new builds have a tree?
Yes, we look at sod and a tree.
Is that standard?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so this is in addition to, and that the landscaping is but one of the things. So they couldn't do three different landscaping elements, but they had to choose-
Correct.
-landscaping is to add to one of the, one thing to add to this additional list, right?
Right. So they, they could do a change in the roof line, change in exterior materials, and then additional landscaping that varied from the other.
Okay.
So that, that would be a third.
Okay.
But right, they'll still have to have two of the, the ones that are in the original list.
So will you, at a later date, define what landscaping is? Because I just feel like that's vague enough that they could be like, well, this flower bed has pansies, and this flower bed has whatever.
Yeah.
It's like, it's different landscaping. You're like, well-
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could put some additional language in there to clarify that.
I just think if we don't clarify it, then effectively, it's, we're having two things on the list. Because everyone's gonna, I would assume that most builders that we're having to abide by this are going to select landscaping as one, because if it's just defined as a flower type, they'll just say, oh, put one flower type here, put another flower type here, put a blue pot here, and put a purple pot here, and we'll, like, call it different landscaping.
Sure. I, we can do that. I, I will say, you know, I, I don't know in practice how much that's going to get used, because, you know, these have to be approved before they can get a permit, so they're gonna, you know, if they choose the landscaping option, they're gonna have to give us a landscaping plan, and we'll look at that. We, we can definitely look at putting some language in there that gives, you know, what those minimum standards are.
Or at least internal-
Because you're right, the way it is right now, it, it is open to interpretation.
I would just assume, I mean, if, if the goal were to be to build efficient properties, and I, I just, I get concerned that as it sits right now, it just takes it down to two requirements, and-
And I know we're not trying to back any of the home builders into a corner or anything, but I just think we need to be a little bit more specific about what we're asking for.
Sure. I believe, I believe we can, if that's something the council would like to, for us to consider, we can approve this on first reading and have that language in there for second reading.
Great, great.
And, and that would give us actually some time to even take something back to them to make sure they understand what we're-
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
And that's, that's all we have.
I'll, I'll comment on this, Clint Holmes over here. I appreciate you working with the developers and the home builders on this and getting their input and coming up with a solution that, that kind of works, because what we're looking at here is architectural elements that are consistent with the neighborhood, neighborhood continuity, high standards, and then we want you to make it all affordable too. So I mean, it's all, we want it all. But, and it's tough, it's a tightrope that we're, that we're at here in the city today is we were trying to make homes more attractive and raise the standards a little bit, but at the same time, keep that affordability element in there. So I appreciate all the work you did, you ran a good process, you continue to run a good process, and your conclusions are sound, and I appreciate your work. Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. I mean, I think that what we want to make sure is that, two, two things. One is that these are neighborhoods that are built to last, for families to really enjoy, for generations to come. And there's also a pragmatic approach to this too. From a city perspective, neighborhoods within the city, there's value in us ensuring that we're retaining our value, and that as we're providing street repairs, and police, and fire, and other services to these neighborhoods, that for generations to come, they're retaining their value. So I think that it's important for us to make sure that structures are built to last. And, but at the same time, like Councilmember Holmes said, I'm so appreciative of the home builder community. I think they really do care about our city. I, I know many home builders in this community who really are vested in our city and love it very much and want, have those same goals, and I, I want them to find success as well. So I, I echo Jim in terms of really trying to work with them, and make sure that we're building neighborhoods to last, but also ensuring that we're being thoughtful in, in working with that home builder group. So I'm excited about this, and would like to see that changed maybe by the second reading.
Sure.
All right, thanks, Clint.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next presentation, I've asked Thomas Brocato with Lloyd Goslink to give council an overview of Texas Energy, including the history of deregulation, ERCOT, and a brief explanation of February winter storm. Each of these issues could be discussed for hours, if not days. And so our goal is to give you just a very high-level overview, and of course, to answer your questions. Thomas is a partner, like I mentioned, at Lloyd Goslink in its energy and utility area practice. He has 30 years of experience, and he serves as the lead attorney for the Atmos Steering Committee and the Encore Steering Committee, the groups in which Waco pools its resources with other cities in order to protect our residents on energy issues. So I'm going to turn it over to Thomas.
Welcome.
Thanks so much. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. As Ms. Ritchie said, I'm Thomas Brocato with law firm of Lloyd Goslink. I would also note that the Steering Committee of Cities served by Atmos is the largest coalition of its kind in the state, 175 cities in your own. Ms. Ritchie serves as the chairperson, and on behalf of those cities, I would just say we, we really do appreciate the time and effort that she devotes to that organization, and y'all's willingness to share her with us. Today, I'm going to talk to you about three things. First, I'm going to give you a, a high-level background on electric utility regulation and its history, and then I'll shift over and talk to you about the Electric Reliability Council of Texas, or ERCOT, what it does, what its responsibilities are. And then we'll shift and talk, lastly, about winter storm Uri and fallout in response to that storm from last February. So I'll just jump right in. Let's first start by talking a little bit about electric utility regulation. Because of its capital-intensive nature, the provision of electric utility service historically was, was referred to as a natural monopoly. And because of that, we have regulation at the state and the city levels. Utilities were vertically integrated or bundled, which means that they owned all three functions of utility service. They owned the generation aspect, they owned the transmission and distribution portion of the business, also referred to as the wires portion. And then, lastly, they also controlled and ran the retail electric provider portions of the business, the metering, the billing, the, and that sort of thing. And as I noted, the state, as well as the cities, regulated all three. In the mid-'90s, however, there was momentum to begin to deregulate some historically-regulated industries, including the provisional electric service. And in 1995, the Texas Legislature adopted a bill that deregulated the wholesale power market within the Electric Reliability Council of Texas, or ERCOT. And then in 1999, we had landmark legislation, SB 7, which authorized retail competition within ERCOT. That competition began on January the 1st of 2002. And prior to that time period, between '99, when SB 7 went into effect, and 2002, when retail competition began, we had a series of cases at the PUC that unbundled or broke apart those vertically-integrated utilities into different components. We'll talk about that briefly. So beginning in 2002, utilities are no longer unbundled, which means that they don't own all three functions that I described a moment ago. And, and I should also note that we've got the, the generation function, which is now fully deregulated, we've got the transmission and distribution function, or the wires piece, that's for you all, Encore is your provider, that is still a monopoly service, and therefore, it is still regulated by the state and by the cities, including your city. And then, lastly, we have the retail function, and that too is deregulated largely. And so that's how we now exist in the deregulated parts of the state since 2002. And this just kind of restates what I just said a moment ago. Also, just to clarify in terminology, because you see these terms used interchangeably, electric utility, wires utility, or wires company, transmission and distribution utility, or TDU, those all mean the same things. And again, for you, that means Encore, whose services are still regulated by the city and the state. Now, when the legislature deregulated the market back in 1999 with the adoption of SB 7, they did carve out certain areas of the state that do not face competition. And this slide shows you some of those areas. Basically, ERCOT, and we'll show a map of it in a moment, does not extend to the Texas Panhandle where SBS serves, far west Texas, El Paso, the northeast corner of the state, Marshall, Texarkana area, or in southeast Texas where Entergy serves, that's the Beaumont, Port Arthur area. And there's some political reasons, quite frankly, for that. At the time, the Speaker of the House was Pete Laney, he was from near Lubbock, so the Panhandle doesn't have deregulation. Carl Parker was a powerful state senator from Port Arthur area, Port Arthur doesn't have deregulation. In addition, the legislature stated that co-ops, electric co-ops, and we have over 100 in the state, as well as municipally-owned utilities, those are cities that own their electric utility, could opt out of competition. And to date, every single municipally-owned utility except one, Lubbock, and every co-op except for one down in the valley have, have opted out of competition, meaning they are still a monopoly provider. So if you live in Austin, for example, or San Antonio, cities that own their utility, you do not get to choose who your retail electric provider is. And this map kind of graphically shows what I was describing. The highlighted areas are where investor-owned monopoly providers provide service within ERCOT. So if you live in any of the, the non-white areas on that map, you have retail choice. And while that may look like it doesn't cover the majority of the state, 26 out of 29 million Texans live in those dark areas and do have the opportunity to pick their retail electric provider. Okay. And by the way, please, I'll interrupt if you have questions or you want me to say more or less about a particular topic. Now let's shift gears and talk about ERCOT. Prior to February, when I mentioned that I did ERCOT work, people's eyes would just roll back, and now I'm much more popular at dinner parties, but for all the wrong reasons. So let's talk a little bit about what ERCOT is. And, and it means several different things. ERCOT is one of, and that number should be nine reliability councils in the United States. We, we originally had 13, but we now have nine. In 1965, there was a major outage along the eastern seaboard, and the result was that they, the, the government created reliability councils basically to keep the lights on. They regionalized it, and they created these different reliability councils, including the one here in Texas, ERCOT. As you can tell from that, that photograph, it encompasses about 75% of the landmass of Texas, but about 85% of its total load. Also significantly, you'll, you'll notice, ERCOT is the only reliability council on that map that's wholly located within the boundaries of one state, which means it is largely outside of federal jurisdiction. The, the acronym ERCOT can also refer to several different things. It can be the ERCOT market, it can refer to the geographic region depicted there on the map, it can be used to just refer more generally to our electric grid, or it is also used to refer to the specific corporation that administers the grid, or the stakeholder process that exists over at ERCOT. We refer to that at times as the ERCOT process. So that, that term is used interchangeably to mean those different things. There is a hardened facility outside of Austin in Taylor, Texas, where the grid is managed, and then there's a backup facility just outside of Austin, actually in Austin, which also includes the administrative offices. ERCOT is funded with a, with a per-megawatt-hour fee that appears on consumers' bills, and that budget and fee are all set by the Public Utility Commission. Currently, we have ERCOT before the commission with such a proceeding pending. This map also shows in a little greater detail the regions that are covered by, by ERCOT. But as I noted earlier, even though that dark blue area, dark gray area on the map is the geographical boundaries, there are many areas within ERCOT that do not have retail competition. And as I noted before at the bottom of this slide, most of ERCOT's responsibilities are not subject to federal jurisdiction. And that, of course, has come under some criticism as a result of the winter storm, and we'll talk about that briefly in just a moment. So why is ERCOT important to consumers? Well, it's important because their operations and rules impact the reliability or resource adequacy of electric generation in the state. They also are sort of the referee with respect to wholesale energy transactions and costs. And they also are the, the processor of, when customers want to switch their retail electric providers. And so you can think of them, to some degree, as sort of a referee that manages all the market participants in the wholesale market, while at the same time having a key role with respect to resource adequacy and reliability. As I noted at the bottom of this slide, most of what ERCOT's rules cover is addressed nowhere else. Their rules also refer to as protocols are subject to appeal and approval by the PUC, but those are largely adopted through a stakeholder process. And that stakeholder process is comprised of committees whose members are selected based upon different market segments. I think I've covered most of these items, but here's some other things that ERCOT is responsible for. As I mentioned, the handling of the switches, the central part for settlements, and by that I mean, each day, there are thousands of different transactions that all have invoicing that is done by ERCOT, and those transactions all are settled through ERCOT's processes. And then, as I noted, they're also involved heavily with grid planning, which also includes the construction of transmission facilities, the large poles and wires that you see along highways and in other areas of the state. Since 2006, cities have participated in large numbers at ERCOT. All of those cities listed there, including your city, is a member of ERCOT, meaning you all pay your dues each year, which, as an aside, is only $100. But that allows cities to have a voice at ERCOT. And indeed, we have Nick Farrenbach, who is an employee of the City of Dallas, who's a member of the ERCOT board itself, at least for right now, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And in addition, we have city representation on the Technical Advisory Committee, which is the, the sort of most substantive, highest ranking, if you will, committee at ERCOT. And we have two representatives who represent cities' interests on those committees. And so we do have an important voice over at ERCOT. I talked earlier about the stakeholder- I talked earlier about the stakeholder process, and again, by that I mean, all the various market segments have representation on the various committees at ERCOT, which means they have input. And those committees are tasked with various responsibilities, but the stakeholders are involved in the adoptions of rules, the modifications or repeals of rules. They bring issues of importance to those committees, and they all sort of funnel up to the Technical Advisory Committee that I mentioned, and then ultimately to the board. Some of the key issues that are going on now, and have really gone on for quite some time over at ERCOT, but in particular since Winter Storm Yuri, relate to keeping the lights on at a reasonable price on a deregulated market. I think we all understand that the provision of electricity is a critical commodity in our society, but in Texas, the market that we have, the market design that we have, was intended to incentivize generators to produce electricity and to build power plants, but there's no direct legal authority by either the state or any other authority to require generation to be built. And that's worked quite well for us over the last 20 years. It has maintained reasonable prices and a high level of reliability. That all changed the second week of February, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Another key issue that relates directly to this is how do you maintain adequate reserve margins? And you can think of a reserve margin as a cushion, because electricity generally cannot be stored in large amounts, although battery technology has been improving very rapidly, and we do have a lot of growth in battery storage. But generally speaking, you're not able to store electricity, which means at any moment in time, you have to have a perfect match between load and demand. How that's done is way beyond my expertise, but that's something that ERCOT is responsible for. But we always want to have a cushion, and there's lots of dialogue going on right now over at the Public Utility Commission about what the appropriate cushion is. Traditionally, it's been about 12.5%. Ironically, right now, we're at about 15%. So we have sufficient generation, installed generation. Again, the problem back in February was, a lot of that generation was not operating when we needed it. Another key issue that's going on really at the legislature, as well as at the PUC, relates to the type of market that we have. As I noted earlier, we traditionally, or we have always had, what's called an energy-only market, which means generators are paid for the power that comes out of their power plants. In other areas of the country, however, generators receive payments simply to have generation available, to give them an incentive to build generation. And in addition to that, they get paid for the output of those power plants. We had an interim committee hearing over in the Senate Business and Commerce Committee a couple of weeks ago, and keep in mind, the ledge just ended their 87th session at the end of May, and we've already had an interim session. This is separate from the special session that you've probably heard a great deal about, to take up what changes, if any, do we need to make to our market design? And no one wants to say the word "capacity market," but everyone's talking about paying incentives to generators to ensure that we have sufficient resources in the long-term and near-term futures. So I think you can expect that we will see some types of tweaks to the market design that are intended to increase reliability in the state. And as I noted a moment ago, the market that we have now is one where, as demand goes up and generation goes down, prices go up, and it incentivizes generators to bring more generation online. And as that happens, the price goes down. And so you may have heard it talked about in the media, scarcity pricing, that term's been used a lot lately, to describe this notion that, again, as load goes up and supply goes down, that prices go up, and that's what's referred to as the scarcity pricing model. And there are those, again, who, now at the legislature and over at the commission and elsewhere, who have serious concerns about the long-term viability of that type of market.
Can you speak to that for a second?
Yeah, sure.
So like, I know that, and if I'm getting ahead because of our discussion on Winter Storm Yuri to come, but I know that during the winter storm, because of that model, there were people that normally would have had $500 electric bills that had $40,000 electric bills, and people that normally would have had $1,000 electric bills had $120,000 electric bills. And so it feels very unjust that someone who would sign up for an index account, and frankly, probably had some misrepresentation in the extent of the volatility of the market. And so my question is, what, do you have any understanding of what's being done to prohibit an instance like that from occurring again? I mean, could, literally could bankrupt small business by those accounts? And then in addition to that, the second question I have is, who wins? Like, is there someone that's making good profit on that and putting...
Yes, there's someone who has.
And so, help me understand, so let's back up and say, or maybe start with who wins, and then if we could back up and be like, who, what is being done to correct that?
Sure. If I may, I'm going to answer them in the opposite, in the order you first answered. Okay. So index pricing, offer plans from retail electric providers have gotten a lot of attention, and they should, because as you noted, customers that were on index plans, in particular where it hit, really hard with the high bills that they received, because they had full exposure to market prices. And the legislature adopted a bill that has outlawed those plans going forward. And so they received some assistance there. In addition, the commission has an ongoing project that they've opened up to discuss ways to assist some of those customers. I don't know all the details about that, but those are the two primary things that are going on, most notably, as I mentioned, the outlawing of those plans going forward. As to who the winners are, I think that it's clear that natural gas producers did well. Gas prices went from $3 in MMBTU to over $400 per MMBTU. And, you know, there's some that have concerns and questions about why that took place. There's a report that was just issued a couple of weeks ago by the University of Texas, that the PUC had commissioned them to produce a report that sort of broke down the storm. And, you know, that report, again, makes it clear that there were concerns about gas supply and gas prices and whatnot. You know, there are some generators that, you know, did well. Frankly, if your generation was there, then you did well, because the commission issued an order on February 15th that locked in prices at $9,000 per megawatt hour, and that continued until February the 19th. And it's because of that that you heard a lot of discussion in the legislature about repricing the market, just literally going back and saying, prices should not have been this high for this extended period of time, and we want to reprice it. The Senate passed a bill on March 15th, the House did not adopt it, and that failed. And then they shifted gears and focused more on, well, how can we pay this money back? Because there's about $3 billion in defaults that occurred, and right now, we've got those cases going on over at the PUC, which is a way to a low-cost form of financing over an extended period of time. It's no exaggeration to say that we will all be paying for Winter Storm Yuri for the next 20 or 30 years through a surcharge of some type on our bills. And that includes your gas bills as well. Those cases were filed last Friday.
So from a point of advocacy, I think it's important, like, I know of small businesses that have come to me because of the spike in their bill, and so I do think it's important for us to consider what I would assume is small, I think it's more likely that small businesses would be, or businesses would be on indexed accounts than consumers. But I know of small businesses that were greatly impacted by that. And so I would encourage the commission, to the extent it is evaluating opportunities to address what I would say is our unjust bills to these small businesses or businesses, to really, to continue on that work. And then, I think I have a question about why the consumer is, will be paying a surcharge, why will the consumer be paying the surcharge for the cost of Winter Storm Yuri for decades?
Well, I should state that the...
I know, that's, you go, sorry.
But the primary reasons, well, let me say it differently. The majority of customers who receive high bills were not on index products. In the total scheme of things, they represent a pretty small number of the total number of customers. What really impacted customers most, especially businesses, were something called ancillary services. I'm trying to explain it to you without going on too long, but basically, ERCOT has to procure at any moment something called ancillary services. They have to procure resources, generation resources, to maintain the stability of the grid. We have certain resources that are called intermittent, such as gas, excuse me, such as wind and solar, and because they're intermittent, ERCOT has to purchase basically backup generation, firm generation, to make sure that the grid stays reliable. Typically, those are about $1 million a day and cost statewide. They're spread everywhere, no one even hardly notices them. During the storm, ancillary service costs for two days were in excess of $1 billion a day. And that's really what is hitting customers and cities, honestly, the hardest, is those high ancillary service amounts. Even though I said we have a free market, our market has always had a cap on the price of the energy at $9,000 per megawatt hour. However, ancillary services do not have a cap, and they peaked at over $25,000 a megawatt hour during that period, and that's what led to the $1 billion in statewide cost at the time. And that's really what customers are being hit hard with. I will tell you that the legislature adopted SB 3, which limits going forward the price that ancillary services can reach at 150% of whatever the energy cap is. So going forward, we shouldn't see spikes of that nature, but that's really what has hit most customers. And the legislature also authorized the securitization of all the defaults or uplifted amounts. As I noted, there's about $3 billion of, they call them defaults or short pays, where market participants weren't able to pay their bills. And the legislature said that that can be spread to all market participants and collected over an extended period of time, probably 20 or 30 years, and that will filter down to customers in some way or another.
So when we go back to the winners, the gas producers, is that, how did you characterize that?
Well, it varies, but if you had generate, gas producers, owners of generation, whose generation was operating at the time, I mean, I'll show you, in fact, that slide right behind you or in front of you. At its worst, we had 52,000 megawatts of forced outages. That's about almost half of the total capacity. If you were in that other 51.4%, meaning your generation was operating, then you were getting $9,000 per megawatt hour for an extended period of time, several days. And those generators did well, and that's how the market is designed to work, honestly. Except this whole issue of, should prices have been brought down sooner? And there's a lot of controversy over that, and I've got a slide in a second to touch on.
I just continue to question whether or not the systems was set, it's fair for the consumer to be bearing the weight of those, these bills through surcharges for 30 years for the, for a limited number of winners that you mentioned? And whether increased regulation was necessary to prohibit this circumstance from existing?
No, I completely understand and agree, and the tension is what I said earlier, which is, how do you have a commodity that is absolutely necessary in our society, and at the same time, you not have any type of authority that can require it to be, to be, you know, produced at sufficient amounts? I mean, that's always been the tension in our market, and the, and the design, it was, we'll do it by letting prices go up, like, letting supply and demand work. And again, for 20 years, that's worked really well. It didn't in February. And the reason it didn't in February is because we had generation that was offline. So you could have put the price at 10,000, 20,000, whatever, infinite number, and it wouldn't have made a difference. Generators were bringing everything that they had, they just weren't able to bring it online.
So is the answer that the regulation should have not allowed the prices to spike to that level?
Well, there's a couple of things that have come out of it. Number one, should the government have required generators to do better weatherization and winterization? And indeed, SB 3 requires winterization going forward. The commission took comments last week, we filed comments on behalf of cities, addressing some of those issues, because obviously, they produce electricity reliably, reliably all over the world in colder climates than we experienced in February reliably. And so that's one fundamental question. What was the other thing you were asking about something else? That was my train of thought.
I was just asking, should we have set the cap, set a lower cap? And you had other suggestions for...
Oh, yeah, the other thing that came up, and it's really been the most controversial thing of all, and it's, I mean, there's many lawsuits addressing this right now, and that's the whole idea of, should, again, should prices have been artificially kept at the cap as long as they were? And there are those who, again, who think, no, it should not have been, prices should have been allowed to come back down, and if we had done that, we wouldn't have had all these defaults, and therefore, we also should reprice the market.
Yep.
Again, the Senate, in one of the most remarkable things, I think that anyone who observes the legislature has ever observed, and there's, the Senate on March 15th, it filed a bill, had a hearing, had three readings, and approved it all in one day. Lieutenant Governor was cross-examining the chairman of the PUC, asking him about repricing, whether they had the authority to do so. I don't think anybody had ever seen that happen before, and they passed the law, but the House did not. And so they chose not to reprice. And the reason they chose not to reprice is because they knew that there were winners and losers, and if they went back and repriced, you were going to alter that, there would be different winners and different losers. Moreover, they were worried about destroying confidence in the market. It's like saying, after the football game, we're going to replay it.
Would the winners and losers predictively have been, the consumers would have been more likely to have been the winners by having less bills than the gas companies, the gas providers, and electric generators not scoring as much of a profit?
The thinking was, from the Senate, was that, yes, that would help consumers.
And the thinking from the House was?
The thinking that, from the House was, all you're going to do is you're moving the chess pieces, you're going to have a different set of winners and a different set of losers.
Winners and losers according to the House.
I'm sorry.
I know you can't speak for the House.
Yeah, I mean, please.
But, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know.
But, but...
I have opinions, but I'm not...
But your understanding of it, who were the winners and losers?
Well, it would have helped retail electric providers. They were the ones who were hit with these bills.
The defaults.
And they were the ones with defaults, and they would have helped, been helped out.
Okay. Thanks.
And so, but again, the reason was, I think, that, again, there was this concern that we're going to just shift who's a winner and who's a loser, and more importantly, destroy, perhaps destroy the confidence in the market. Because market participants went into this, you know, expecting, you know, certain rules to be in place, and if you change them retroactively, the fear is, the generators are just going to pack up and leave. And that's what's going on right now, too, is this concern going forward.
And who was, who has the authority to set those prices that were set for that period? Like, was that the PUC or ERCOT, or who did that?
So on February the 16th, the commission, actually, I mean, just, this slide gives kind of a high-level discussion of what happened in the storm, 144 consecutive blow-freezing, 205 hours here in Waco. Severe storm, as I noted, half-generation was down, and it did affect all the different types of generation. I know there was a lot of discussion in the media about, was it the gas and coal-fired generation that went down? Was it the renewables that went down? And in truth, all types of generation really had difficulties or were impacted. During the storm, February the 16th, in a, again, a highly unusual moment, the commission called an emergency meeting, and they, they said, we are, we are having load shed right now. And when load is being shed inherently, prices should be at the cap. They should have been at 9,000, but they were only at about $1,000 a megawatt hour. And the commission at that moment said, if we've got load shed, we need to be at the cap. Because they were thinking at that time, if we put the price as high as it can go, more generation will come into the market, and that will, that will mitigate or solve our problem. What I think the commission did not understand at that critical moment, I was watching it that, I think, that, that night, is they didn't fully understand that all available generation was being brought online, and that it simply, they, they didn't fully seem to understand the magnitude of the, the forced outages at that moment. So regardless of what they put it to, it wouldn't have made, it wouldn't have brought more generation online.
They were trying to incentivize it.
They were trying to incentivize.
And there wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't a need to incentivize it.
Right. And, and then the, the next thing that happened is ERCOT kept the prices at 9,000 after firm load shed had, had ceased, meaning all, all the load that ERCOT had ordered to be, to be shed in order to keep the grid functioning had come back online, but the prices were still at the cap. And that's what led to $3 billion in defaults, frankly. And so that's why we've seen all the lawsuits, that's why we saw the, the request by the Senate to, or the bill to, to reprice it. And so there are still those who think, no, ERCOT did not act inappropriately, that there was, we were still sort of not totally out of the woods, it was important to still maintain prices at that level until the, I think it was 9:00 AM on the 18th. But that's really the, the big takeaway, the big controversy, the big fight that, that's gone on really ever since, is that February 16th order and the way that ERCOT implemented So what has happened since? Well, everyone either got fired or they resigned. Seven ERCOT board members resigned, six of the, all six of the independent board members, all three commissioners at the PUC resigned, the CEO, Bill Magnus of ERCOT, his job, he was terminated, and literally hundreds of lawsuits have been filed around the state. And so lots of fallout there. The legislature, we talked some, uh, some about their response, they did adopt a, a number of, of bills. Typically, we have about 100 bills each session that deal with utility issues. We had about 400 this past session, they adopted about 20 of those. And they, they deal with PUC ERCOT reform. We're now going to have five PUC commissioners going forward, and the selection process for ERCOT board members has changed. We do have laws that require weatherization, winterization, better communication when there's outages, identification of critical load, which is an issue for cities. And then those bills that we talked about that deal with electric securitization. And here's a, just a, some of the more important legislation, SB three, which is sort of the omnibus bill that addresses a wide range of issues that came out of the storm. And then some other ones here as well, including the one I just mentioned about commissioners. And so the, so right now, we have about 30 rulemakings going on at the, at the PUC, all in response to the storm, addressing different aspects of the storm and the, the response. The plan is to thoroughly consider market redesign between now and the end of the year, although that's not a lot of time to, to, to address something so broad and complicated. But that's where we stand. So, any questions?
It's an excellent presentation, I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Sorry if I went too long.
Any questions?
I imagine you get quite the questions everywhere you go when anyone figures out what I do. Some of my questions are more for staff in response to this. Earlier this year, we had the grid being challenged again, and we were being told to keep our air at 75, and the, the idea of another big power outage feels much more likely when it's incredibly hot in Texas than incredibly cold. So curious what plans we have in place if something, if we were to experience another severe power outage for multiple days? What would cooling centers look like? And then how can we rally and activate our consultants and our lobbyists to really protect our best interests and the best interests of our constituents and the city at the state level where so many of these decisions are being made?
Sure. Good question. On cooling centers, certainly that is on our minds, and I won't say we have a fully-baked strategy, but it is in progress of being considered. And I would imagine it would look a lot like our warming center rollout that we had during the winter storm, which there's opportunities for improvement on as well. In terms of engagement in Austin, I think that's a great question, and if you'll allow us to ponder that and get back with you, I'd like to give you a thoughtful response.
And Bradley, if I could point out that the, the city already is a member of the Encore and Atmos steering committees, and where we pool our resources with, the numbers differ between Encore and Atmos, but we pull our resources with over 100 different cities at a relatively low rate for Waco. It's a, it's a, based on population. And that covers legislative advocacy, that's a lot of what Thomas and his team do during the year, and, and also covers watching ERCOT and those kinds of things. So y'all have been advocating at the state for many years. There's certainly, you know, should we be doing more? Should we be doing something different? It's certainly something that we all should be thinking about, but y'all have been represented at the state for, for quite some time.
And Jennifer, thank you so much for your service on those steering, steering committees, both for Encore and Atmos, and for the information you provided the council during that winter storm, and for facilitating this here today. We, we appreciate your responsiveness and your leadership at the statewide level.
Mr. Riquado, one question, I think you had it on the slide here, about maintaining appropriate reserve margins. Are there efforts being made just to, to maintain some level of energy reserve more, something that wouldn't be tested not only in heat but in cold? Because there's a train of thought that, you know, had we had appropriate energy reserves, and I don't know how that even manifests itself, if that's a big old tank of oil somewhere or what, but do we have like a week's worth of energy that we could tap into? Is there, are there any efforts being made in that regard? I mean, after we get through all this mess in, in 30 years and pay back on them?
Yes, as I noted, you know, typically the target is about 12 and a half percent cushion or reserve margin, and we currently are at about 15, a little bit over that. So in, in a normal circumstance, we would feel like we were in really pretty good shape. Just a few years ago, three or four years ago, we had reached single-digit reserve margins, which is the lowest I can ever recall, it's about 8%. And the commission does, even though it's, it's, it's a deregulated market, a free market, they do have some tools at their disposal. Basically, they adopted some mechanisms that increase power costs to, again, incentivize generators to bring more generation into the market, and that's been successful. I mean, as I said, we're, we're at a, again, a, a high level compared to the historic goal that we had set. Right now, however, there's a lot of discussions going on at the commission about whether we need to change that target and other steps that need to be taken to ensure that the generation that we have is able to operate during extreme weather events. And that's what leads to the whole winterization, weatherization issue, because, and, but I do think that what we're going to end up with will be higher reserve margins, as well as requirements to have generation operate at certain benchmark weather thresholds.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Pedro, thank you so much for the presentation. I do agree with Mayor Meek that it is very informative and very detailed, so I do appreciate that. I more or less understand what led up to the events of the winter storm, and more or less understand how pricing was done, whether fairly or not, I mean, it was still done. What is being done now to prevent that, especially on the pricing end, prevent that from happening in the future? I, I, I see some of the legislation that's passed, I see some of the board members that have passed, but, or resigned, but I still am not seeing detailed information as to how do we prevent that from happening again to our constituents, our local businesses, et cetera, in our community.
Three things that immediately come to mind, one I mentioned about the outlawing of indexed product, uh, indexed retail offerings that expose customers to price volatility. The second thing is, there's been lots of discussion by the commissioners about lowering the cap. It's currently 9,000 megawatt hour. I think it's pretty clear that we're, we're likely to see some change there with it being dropped down. I know Commissioner McAdams mentioned, you know, throughout the $4,000 range.
But that's just in conversation right now, nothing has passed, correct?
Correct, nothing has passed. There's been, but, I mean, there, the commissioners are actively talking about that, I mean, I mean, they have put that out there, it has not happened yet. And then the third thing that immediately comes to mind is what I mentioned earlier as well, placing a, a cap on the amount that can be charged for ancillary services. So those are three specific things, I think, that are, either have happened or in the process of happening, that will hopefully take away the, the exposure to that volatility, those, those big spikes.
And the cap has been put into place or not yet?
The, the cap for ancillary services is in place. It, it's 150% of whatever the cap is on energy prices. So right now, it's 13,500, since the cap for energy prices is 9,000, but if, if they reduce the cap for energy down to 4,000, then it would be 6,000 for ancillary services.
But that is, that is in place right now?
That is in place right now with SB three.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I, again, appreciate this so much. I think the questions that I had were about supply of, as well as corrections to the pricing. The last question I would have then is, is there any hope for relief for consumers at this point? Or where does that stand in this moment? Both the index account users as well as the general commu, uh, users for the, is it ancillary charge? What did you call it?
It's, excuse me, ancillary service charge.
Let's just charge it.
The legislature chose to adopt securitization as a method of helping consumers by spreading out the impact over an extended period of time. That's the primary tool that, that they put into place to help consumers. They've also done that for gas utilities, and I won't get into it, but just so you also know, they, they've, they've also adopted securitization to help consumers avoid paying for the very high prices that Atmos and other gas utilities incurred during the storm. And so the securitization is really the, the mechanism that the legislature chose to adopt to assist consumers, the primary one.
And I could be wrong, but I heard, I thought that I heard from you earlier that there could be some forward movement, or that the commission is still discussing relief. Is that, did I miss hear that?
They've got a project open right now dealing with those indexed price offerings. I don't know the specifics, though. It's just been opened, and I, I confess, I haven't focused on it.
Well, from a, I, I think for just, you know, with my hope to care back to the commission, I think what this council is saying is that this is something that, after February and going forward, it's something that this council has great concern over, because we want our, our residents, our citizens, our businesses to have electricity and power, because it's necessary to stay warm or stay cool in the hot and cold climate of Texas. And it's also important that we think critically about what, what is the right mechanisms to ensure good product and allow for, for the, you know, what's the right balance of a, a free market, but also the right amount of regulation to ensure that we don't have a repeat of what we incurred in February. So I look forward to seeing robust outcomes come from all of the, the multitude of partners from the PUC to ERCOT to the legislature from this, and we'll continue to monitor it from here and advocate on behalf of our citizens. Any questions or comments? We will, let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 4:15, and we'll pick up with the next presentation then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
And I think we have a presentation from Nick and Paul on both the item 2021-497 and 2021-498.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. We do have Nick and Paul. I think Nick's going to do the primary portion of the presentation today. We're actually doing both 497 and 498, both work sessions together. As councils are aware, Friday evening, the budget was filed for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and it's available on our homepage, waco-texas.com. Residents can simply scroll to the middle of the homepage and look for the quick link that says FY21, 22 proposed budget, and it opens up, I believe, a 500-page-long PDF, which they can dive into. Obviously, the budget represents months of work by staff and consultation with the council, and hopefully, as Nick goes through his slides and presentation today, the council will see your fingerprints on this budget, because we've worked hard to hear your feedback and align the budget to the council's strategic goals. So, Nick, you want to take us away?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to formally present to you the City Manager's submitted budget for fiscal year 21, 22. But before I get started, I wanted to also thank my team, I recognize my team, for all the hard work they did putting together this budget, going through the process, learning the process for a lot of them, because a lot of them are new, as well as the departments for their assistance throughout the process and answering all of our questions as we went through and vetted everything. So with that, the budget process, so we just wanted to highlight and go over the process that we've been going through this year. So in March, the departments were requested to submit their base budgets, as well as any budget requests by April 9th. And then in May, the departments presented their base budgets and budget requests to the City Manager's office. And June and July, my team and City Manager's office have been presenting you with updates on the budget, the process, and what we've been going through, and many recommendations we have, as well as to get your feedback. In July, the City Manager's office also ranked their, the budget requests, and told us what to include in the budget as we prepared it. And then last Friday, we finally filed the budget. All right, some highlights. So for the general fund, the biggest highlight is the tax rate reduction of nine tenths of a cent, which is 1.15%. The budget for the general fund and across the entire budget is aligned with council's strategic goals. Property taxes and sales tax account for 73% of the fiscal '22 revenues in general fund compared to 70% last year. This is primarily driven by a 7.6, 7.6 million dollar increase in sales tax from last year's conservative numbers. Last year's numbers were brought down because of the pandemic and not knowing what was going to happen this year. With a return to more normalcy, we have boosted that back up to the normal growth rate. Property tax increased by about, what is it? Sorry, 7.5 million or 11.24% driven primarily because of the change in certified values, which is, for this, was a bill, was a billion-dollar increase from the certified estimates for last year's budget to the certified rolls for the current year. Other highlights from the other funds, $118 million investment in infrastructure improvements. There's no rate increases for water, wastewater, solid waste. We reduced a subsidy for the zoo and the golf course as part of the budget. The new energy utility begins operations October 1st, and hotel motel tax revenues are returning to pre-pandemic levels. As mentioned at the top, the budget was done in consideration and alignment with the strategic goals, which are outlined on the slide. So key items that focus on each of the different strategic goals are presented over the next several slides. So for the creative culture of equity and inclusion, about $1.1 million across the budget, has been invested in this area. This includes moving the code-compliant staff to being fully funded by the general fund, as opposed to being funded by part of the CDBG grant. Boosting the city-based pay to $15 per hour for all full and part-time employees, the addition of the Juneteenth holiday, and improving communications across the city, both from the municipal information department, adding staff. both, um, from the municipal information department, um, adding staff, um, and services there, as well as updates to the website and improves citizen engagement as part of the budget process going forward. Um, in order to facilitate economic development, we've increased the contribution to WEMAC by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is on par with the annual increases that we've done for, um, WEMAC, um, over the previous years. Um, corridor plans, both for twenty fifth and twenty sixth and West Highway eighty four. Um, the visitor center relocation, um, moving that, um, to a new location to drive tourism and, uh, usage of the facility. Uh, the economic development plan, um, development services adding to additional FTEs to improve services to, uh, customers. Um, and these increases in costs are supported by increases in fees as well as the addition of an economic development coordinator. All right. Providing a safe and resilient city, um, two point five million dollars is dedicated to this, uh, strategic goal area. Um, and this includes the addition of seventeen FTEs for police and fire. Um, twelve police officers as part of the cops grant application as well as funding for, um, the vehicles and equipment that they would need. Um, the addition of three firefighters for, um, planned, uh, construction of fire station fifteen. So that, uh, twelve, twelve firefighters are gonna add it all in one year. Um, so it's a strategic approach to, um, adding those positions. And then second set of turnout care for firefighters. Um, to enhance the quality of life of the citizens and the residents, um, we're devoting one point seven million dollars as part of this budget. Uh, this includes a park planner to help with, uh, parks development and construction. Um, health inspector position, um, that is funded by fees in McClain County. And improvements to Doris Miller YMCA as part of, uh, the acquisition that she approved at last council. Um, in addition, three additional FTEs for residential collection for solid waste. So building a high performing government, um, includes three point seven million dollars in this budget. Um, that includes the staffing from municipal information, um, based off of the, uh, study that is being completed and assessment. Um, we'll determine exactly what those positions are and what, uh, their services will detail. We'll be investing IT infrastructure, um, both, um, the network equipment as well as for application programmer, a new position that'll, um, help the city across the board. The addition of one FTE middle of the year for the city attorney's office. Um, and then working to complete office space and bring, uh, all staff to, um, have space to work in onsite, um, as well as insourcing illegal dumping for solid waste. And then seven FTEs for water, uh, utility operations.
Hey Nick, I have a quick question for you. With the FTE, five new FTEs for the illegal dumping, how does that compare to the workload of what was being done before with the contract, the outside contracts that we had?
In, in terms of cost or personnel, both?
Personnel and...
This is, it, the cost is a little higher, um, versus the contract amount. And, and we plan to have a work session, um, hopefully within the next thirty days to go over alleys in particular. And we'll walk through the entire program.
All right. To support sustainability, um, there's a number of different initiatives that we've undertaken for this area, um, with no specific direct cost, um, actually cost reductions in certain cases. Um, so a new green energy contract will be effective beginning April first of twenty twenty two. Um, and that contract reduces the cost of electricity by about fifteen percent. Um, we have the special product funding which is reserved for fleet replacement. Um, and that should help prioritize the fleet, um, including conversion to green vehicles as appropriate. And then we have the sustainability manager that'll be coming on board as well. Improving infrastructure, um, as mentioned at the top, um, this budget dedicates over a hundred and eighteen million dollars to improving infrastructure, um, split between both governmental funds and enterprise funds. Um, governmental funds is also commonly referred to as our tax supported, um, areas. This includes your fire stations, your police, streets, um, and then enterprises, your water, solid waste, um, convention services are all included in there. And as part of this process, I, I wanted, we wanted to mention that, um, over the next month, we'll be having, you know, workshops with council, mayor and council as part of budget audit committee to go over the requests that were submitted by departments to vet them through and come up with the final CIP that you'll, um, approve as part of an amendment to the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget, um, in late September. All right. So all the funds of the city. So this graph shows, um, the various expense category types, um, that we have as part of the budget. Um, you'll see salary and wages and capital expenditures, or capital projects are the largest, um, expenditures for the city. And this table details it in more detail and shows that the total overall budget for the city is over five hundred and twenty two million dollars. This is similar graph for the funding sources. You'll see charter service services as a primary source of revenue, um, across the city. This includes for the water, uh, and wastewater utilities and solid waste are big drivers of the charter service. And then right behind that is, uh, property tax revenues. And this table, uh, shows that the overall revenues for the city are expected to be about five hundred and thirty four million dollars for next year. All right. The general fund, which is a primary operating fund of the city, um, includes public safety, parks and rec, general government, um, all the basic services that, uh, citizens expect from government. So this chart compares expenditures in the fiscal year twenty one adopted budget to the fiscal year twenty two proposed budget. You'll see, um, that the overall budget increases by five point seven percent. That's partly due to last year's budget being, uh, conservative because of the, uh, pandemic, um, and returns to normal growth in the current year. And one of the primary increases is, uh, six point three million dollars increase in stream bridge maintenance. And four point one million dollar salary and benefit increase. So this graph just, uh, details, um, shows it in a graphical form with the table side by side for the general fund budget, which is a hundred and sixty two and a half million dollars. Again, you'll see that salaries and benefits make up the primary components of the expenditures for general fund. They're about sixty three percent of the overall general fund budget. This next chart shows a comparison of revenues, um, from twenty one's adopted budget to twenty two's proposed. Uh, you'll see the largest revenue source, single source is property tax, which increased by eleven percent, which is about the seven point five million dollars discussed earlier, um, due to increased values. Um, and then sales tax, which increased by seven point six percent, which is just a return to normalcy. This next slide is just a graphical presentation of it to just further reiterate the primary sources of revenue for the general fund of being property tax and sales tax. So sales tax, um, we are proposing a growth of seven point six million dollars in the budget for sales tax, um, which is slight pullback from the fiscal year twenty one projections of forty six point six million dollars. Uh, sales tax returns to normal growth, um, from fiscal year nineteen levels and, um, stimulus funding, funding lanes in fiscal year twenty two. Uh, staff will continue to monitor and report on the city sales tax revenues and projections on a monthly basis as we've currently been doing. All right. Property tax valuation and rates. All right. So this graph, um, basically shows a comparison between the fiscal year twenty one certified estimate, which is what the fiscal year twenty one budget was based off of, and the fiscal year twenty two certified roll, which is what the current proposed budget is based off of, and the comparison of what was in under ARB review last year compared to now. Um, as you see last year, the amount in ARB review was over twenty eight percent, and this year it's slightly above two percent.
What, what caused that big change in a year's time?
I think it had mostly to do with the pandemic and timing of si- the situation and, um, what was going on at that time. Um, and I know they made a concerted effort this year to resolve their large cases as soon as they could, um, in order to be able to certify by the twenty fifth of July.
It, it, and, and pardon me for not knowing this, but is that normal for them to have close to thirty percent under review or is it more typical to be in the two to five percent range?
I think it's more typical for them to be able to certify, so to be under five percent in ARB review and not to have thirty percent in ARB review.
It's an odd year because of the pandemic. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. So this chart shows the certified rolls and the comparison of, um, the valuation increase as well as the makeup of the rolls. Um, so you'll see here that, um, valuations increased by over six hundred and forty three million dollars between the two certified rolls. And that's made up of a hundred and ninety five million dollars in new construction, new value that was added to the rolls this year. Um, and four hundred and forty eight million dollars in appreciation and value for, um, existing property that existed the prior year. Um, and the overall valuation for the city has reached eleven point nine billion dollars. Um, of this total, of the total roll, fifty, fifty six point and a half percent is residential. So primarily residential, um, is the makeup of our, our property tax base.
Do, that, I like that graph there. If, that's gotta be the, the most we've ever seen in new, isn't it, Paul? Or, I, I would just go back, I'd be interested in going back to look to see if...
We were around one ninety, the year before, one eighty eight, um, but it's, we can get you some history on that, but last year is around one eighty eight, I believe.
Thirty percent of the new value is new, new construction. Or is that, is that what we've been doing the last few years? I didn't see that in the material.
Fairly typical, but we can get you the detailed data on that. Sure.
Big number. It's great.
And, and growing. We expect next year will be even larger.
Sorry. All right. So this chart shows the change in valuations for the TIF. Um, so typically the valuations in the TIF has been growing, um, except for this year. So this year, the valuation in the TIF actually decreased. Um, however, the decrease in the TIF values actually returns it to a more normal, uh, percentage of the city's overall taxable value, which is around five percent. Um, as opposed to last year where it was slightly more above six percent. All right. So the certified tax valuations, so this graph just shows graphically the change in the certified values, um, for the last six years and the change in the net, net taxable value over that same timeframe. Um, it's gone up every year, um, and the value changed year over year. Um, this graph also depicts, um, last year you'll see it dips a little bit. Um, because historically it's been around a seven percent growth rate for the city and the valuations. Um, and this year, it's not quite at seven percent, but it's more closer to what it's historically been, which is around six percent. So this chart shows, um, the tax rate, um, from fiscal year thirteen through twenty two, um, and it depicts when the rates have changed. Um, both, and then the components of the tax rate between maintenance operations and debt. Um, over this timeframe, um, they've stayed, um, maintenance operations rate has stayed relatively stable over this, at that timeframe. It ranges between, um, the mid eighties as far as its percentage of the overall tax rate. Um, and the overall debt rate has actually decreased two cents from fiscal year thirteen, uh, to fiscal year twenty two. All right. So this chart shows the tax rate as a percentage of the non new revenue tax rate and your, and the voter approval tax rate. Um, so the previous five budgets have averaged a hundred and three point six percent of the non new revenue tax rate and ninety five point three percent of the voter approval tax rate. The proposed budget, um, is below these averages for the last five years reflecting the council's commitment to find a higher level of services to a growing city while maintaining fiscal responsibility by, by managing the tax rate. So this graph shows the maintenance and operations property tax, um, over the last six years and the change in the maintenance operation rate, um, as well as the year over year revenue change. So this, this slide is a comparison, uh, of McClain County city tax rates to the, to city Waco's, um, as well as the components of their tax rate, um, and how much those tax rates are. So one of the things we wanted just to reiterate that it's really difficult to compare tax rates for various jurisdictions, especially neighboring cities, um, when, like, Waco is so much larger in size and scope than the other surrounding cities. Uh, for example, uh, when you compare directly to Woodway, um, Woodway only has an operations and maintenance levy. Um, they don't have a debt levy. Um, but their levy rate is nine, nineteen cents less than Waco's, um, about thirty percent. But their proper tax levy per capita is a hundred and fifty eight dollars more than Waco's. So again, we just wanted to show that, what they look like, but it's really hard to compare and compare operations between cities across cities, um, based on size and geography. So this slide shows what the taxes, or shows the tax that an average homestead would pay and the increase in values that an average homestead, um, experienced between fiscal year twenty one and twenty two. Um, so valuations increased by nearly fifteen thousand dollars, um, which even with our tax rate cut, result in a, almost a hundred dollar increase in the estimated taxable for a homestead. So this graph shows the components of the tax, um, for a hundred thousand dollar valuation property, um, the bulk of which is for maintenance operations, um, with the addition, with the remainder going to the debt. But overall, their taxes decline because of our cut in the tax rate. So this slide is a, so this slide is a summary of the proposed rate and the non new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate and what it would, each one of those different situations would generate as far as revenue goes. Um, so from a maintenance operations perspective, the non new tax rate is projected to generate about seventy two million dollars, um, in revenue. Whereas the non new ta- non new revenue tax rate would generate seventy million dollars, which is about two point five million dollars less. And if we use a voter approval tax rate, um, we would generate over eighty million dollars in property tax revenues, which is seven point eight million dollars more, um, than what the proposed budget shows. In all situations, the debt rate is the same. All right. The enterprise funds. So this includes water, the airport, solid waste, convention centers, tech string hall of fame, the zoo, uh, the drainage utility. So for the next several slides, we'll go over each of the enterprise funds and, um, their operations and, uh, what we're expecting for the next year. So, um, in fiscal year twenty two, the water utility will see no rate increases. Um, overall, the water fund continues to maintain a strong financial position and is expected to generate revenues in excess of its expenses. Um, and you'll see at the very bottom that their fund balance, their networking capital, and we'll talk about that shortly, exceeds what our, uh, financial management policies require them to have. So the wastewater utility, again, no rate change for wastewater utility in fiscal year twenty two. Um, overall, the fund is also in good shape, um, even as it eats into reserves during the current fiscal year. So WMars, just like the other two water utilities, is in good financial shape. Um, and it's forecasted to generate revenues that exceed expenses as well. Um, the big change between, um, the working capital numbers between year over year has, has to do with the, uh, contract for WMars and the change in its structure, um, in return of capital to the wastewater fund in twenty one, or in twenty.
Is that the difference of the two fifty five, two hundred and fifty five thousand?
That's, that's the explanation for the twelve point nine. That was in the budget for last year and the seven million dollars in the current year. So last year's budget was done before the return of capital was done.
Okay.
So the solid waste utility, um, no rate change for twenty one as well. Um, the solid waste utility is effective to actually add to its reserves in fiscal year twenty two through continued customer growth and usage of its operations. So the drainage utility, which will begin operations on October first, um, will have a, a fee for the average resident of five dollars and forty one cents, uh, per equivalent residential unit. Um, and as the fund begins operations, um, it'll start to slowly build its, uh, working capital. We've added it to the financial policies to be similar to the other utilities and have a thirty percent pocket reserve. But as it begins operations this first year, um, it'll have minimal reserves that'll be built. So this slide shows the average utility bill for a city of Waco resident. Um, the average utility bill will be about a hundred and eighteen dollars this year, which is, uh, an increase of about five dollars and forty one cents, uh, from last year. Um, and that is primarily driven because of the drainage utility. So this slide compares the average utility bill in Waco to other cities across the state. As you'll see, in comparison to neighboring cities, uh, Waco's, uh, overall average utility bill is lower. Um, and we include more services in our average utility bill as well compared to neighboring cities. So the airport fund, um, is in solid financial position, um, helped by funding from the CARES Act. Um, the airport fund operations are projected to slightly utilize reserves in fiscal year twenty two, but very minimally. The convention service, services fund is expected to utilize reserves in order to fund the move of the tourism center from its current, our visitor's center to its current, from its current location to a new location. Even with this use of reserves, the fund continues to maintain a strong networking capital as tourism returns to pre-pandemic levels and hotel motel tax continues to grow. The Texas Ranger Hall of Fame will continue to eat into reserves during the current year as operating expenses continue to exceed operating revenues and funding provided by the general fund and the hotel motel tax. And fiscal year 22, eventually the general fund or the hotel motel tax will have to increase contributions to support the operations of the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame. Cameron Park Zoo. So in fiscal year 22, we reduced the subsidy from the general fund by $1 million due to the growth in admissions as well as the operations at the cafe and the boutique that they've been doing and the increase in revenues that they've seen. In addition, the fund has built up a solid networking capital over the last few years, and so in 22, we will utilize some of those reserves. So the Cottonwood Creek Golf Course Fund, the general fund subsidy is eliminated in fiscal year 22 for this fund because of its growth and its reserves that it has experienced over the last several years. And so revenue increases in this fund are attributable to a fee increase for each, for green fees and cart rentals as part of the city's new lease agreement for the cart rentals. Capital improvements. So this slide shows, or this chart shows the components of the governmental CIP and the funding sources, as well as the departments responsible for the projects. In total, the fiscal year 22 CIP for governmental funds is projected to be around $61 million. The table above details the fiscal year 22 CIP requests that they all, that the department submitted and that have been slotted in 22. Request and project information will be presented to the city manager's office for review as part of our CIP process that we're doing for review and consideration. And then the project request and information will be discussed at the budget audit committee meetings over the next month as part of CIP workshops. And as part of that process, the city manager will recommend and amend the CIP, will recommend an amendment to the CIP on September 14th at the budget audit committee meeting, and will be discussed with mayor and council at that meeting with specific projects that we plan to do for the next year that have been occurring as part of the August workshops. Then on September 21st, a resolution to amend the CIP will be presented to council for consideration and approval. So this slide, so this slide shows the various projects for the enterprise funds, both by department and by fund type and as funding source that have been proposed by the departments. Again, just like the governmental funds, these will be discussed as part of our CIP workshops over the next month. So financial management policy updates. So as part of the, part of the budget process, we made some updates to the financial management policies to clarify different, different information in the financial policies. The primary one was that working capital and clarifying what that means from both a budgetary and finance perspective. So from a budgetary perspective, we exclude the current portion of long-term debt, so bond payments and payments of that type because we budget for them as transfers out to debt service funds. And in finance, excludes cash funded CIP and their calculation of working capital. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear as opposed to the common definition of working capital, which is just your current assets minus your current, divided by your current liabilities. And then we also added the networking capital requirement of, to the drainage utility to match the other utility funds, but provide time for it to build up. So in summary, the fiscal year 22 budget has operational investments that are aligned with council strategic goals via new, new additives and efforts. The tax rate is set at 76 cents, which is a reduction of almost nine tenths of a cent. Water, wastewater and solid waste rates remain the same. We'll have improved communications in fiscal year 22, both through municipal information efforts, the website, as well as citizen engagement efforts. The city will have a $15 minimum city wage. Employees will receive a 3% salary salary increase, and we'll have a Juneteenth holiday added. In addition, in addition, the fiscal year 22 budget includes a strong commitment to improving infrastructure and investing in city facilities with $118 million in investment. There are strategic investments in public safety services, development services, corridor planning and employee safety, and we reduce the general fund subsidy to the golf course. Alright, and last but not least, my favorite slide. So this is our calendar as it now stands. So in bold, we have highlighted the key dates for you guys where action will be needed from council. Starting with August 17th, where we'll have the resolution to set the public hearing and vote date on the post-tax rate, as well as the first reading on the ordinance setting the department. And then on August 31st, will be a special council meeting to hold the public hearing and vote on the drainage charge resolution, as well as to hold the public hearing and vote on the budget, including the fee schedule and the CIP. And then on September 7th, we'll have the public hearing vote on the tax rate ordinance. And lastly, on the 21st of September, of September, we'll have the amended CIP planned by resolution.
Well done, Nick. That was amazing. Thank you so much for that, not only this presentation, but all the budget office's work, Paul, you as well, and to the entire city management team just to get us to this point. It's incredibly challenging, and it truly is a citywide effort to get the budget to this point. So to all of our staff members, thank you so much, but thank you for navigating this so well. And with that, I'll turn the questions to council.
I actually have a calendaring question. Do y'all know what time that budget and audit meeting on the 24th is gonna be? I've got it twice on my calendar that day and.
I was just sending an email to make sure I picked that exactly.
Okay. It's in process. Okay. Thanks so much. But I too, I'm thrilled with the calendar, but I'll cede time to my colleagues.
I'll jump, I'll jump in here. The great work on putting this budget together. It's a half a billion dollar budget. I mean, these are, these are, this is a big, this is a big deal. It takes a lot to sort through it all, and you're addressing a lot of council objectives. I've got some notes here, addressing a lot of council objectives and a nice layout on the strategic goals and how we are actively pursuing all of the strategic goals. And really hitting, continuing to deliver premium city services, I think is important. The police, fire, 12 new police officers, three new firefighters. I think that's an important part of what the city delivers as premium services. The water, wastewater and solid waste budgets all look very solid, and no new rate increases in utilities. I mean, that's brilliant that we're able to continue to do best-in-class services there and, and not raise the rates. We're continuing our commitment on the streets program, which is all about trying to get that pavement condition index up to, you know, 65, 70, wherever we can get. And that's not a, it's not an inexpensive enterprise, and it's, and it costs a lot of money to get all these streets in shape, and I think we've shown a commitment here in this budget to continue to do that. A big deal is the tax rate cut. And again, we've, we've seen, it's the first tax rate cut in eight years. So the first time that anybody on this council, I think, has been part of a tax rate cut. So I'm happy that we have, that we're in good enough shape and our balance sheet is in good enough shape to get that cut in there. I like the way you're showing the recovery of sales tax. I mean, I think we're kind of coming back to normalcy, if you will. Hopefully, it's, it'll be normal as we project an economic recovery and stabilized property values, which even though we're not completely out of the woods yet, we, I think we've got, I like your growth assumptions and your, and your kind of, your trends positive, even though I think, hopefully, they're still conservative, but I don't think they're too, too far out there. Talked a little bit about implementation, implementation of these new fees, impact fees and stormwater fees. I like it where that's going, and we're gonna be seeing the benefit of those here soon. And then getting on to the CIP projects. I mean, it's, it's over a half a billion dollars of the projects if you go through the book there. I mean, and I would invite anybody to get online, as you said, and go through this 550 pages, because there's about 150 pages of a CIP project. A lot of good detail on that. Just, I, I don't, I'm gonna have a few, I haven't had a chance to digest this wholly yet, and I'll hopefully have better questions next week at budget and audit, but just quickly, five quick things on it. I'm trying to reconcile the property tax figures on pages 46, 47 and 57. If you write that down, I'll follow up with you, because I wasn't able to follow the logic. On pages 206 to 256, great info again on the, this is the, the enterprise funds and utilities, as I said before, are strong and no adjustments in the, in the rates. And I'm like what I call the venue projects, the convention center, the Rangers Museum, the zoo and the golf course. We're showing that rebound, the rebound into profitability post-COVID, I think is very impressive, and it really helps us give, gives us a little more latitude in other budget items when those things are operating and kind of carrying themselves to an extent. And reducing that zoo subsidy to a million seven, it's huge, because I think all of us that have been on council for a while saw that kind of going up and up and up, and to see it coming back down, I think, is, is impressive. We talked about that in this year's budget as well. Pages 300 to pages 469, that's all those capital improvements. Again, 430 million, and I'm sure there's even more that we could add to that, but this is what, this is what this council is dealing with, a half a billion dollars worth of improvements. Streets, parks, underground stuff, utilities, all, all of these. And then again, really nice summaries of all the projects there that we're having to deal with on prioritization, availability, leverage, and those are the challenges of putting this budget together. On page 500, I see where we do have the fee schedule, but you know, I don't know if we included the delta of any changes of those fees from year to year. And normally, we see how those fees changed, if there, if there were any changes, because there's several pages of, of fees there, and I don't know if we have the, the impact of any changes. Follow up on that. And then I'm gonna flip back to page 90 where we see, I think we'd requested this before, just getting some peer city data on stipend levels of different, of different cities. I wanted to see that before we kind of push forward with that part of the budget. But overall, great work. Again, these are huge numbers we're talking about now, half, a half billion dollar budget, and not, not a whole lot of cities in the state of Texas have that, and you guys have done a good job pulling this together in, in a tough market. And where we're at with COVID, where we're at with growth is a lot of challenges. You guys have done great pulling it together. Thanks.
I wish y'all at home and in the audience could see just the wide range of notes that both Holmes and I have up here on the dais. We're both like old-school paper people with our like 600-page budget books and our notebooks. So I also have lots of notes that I'm gonna work my way through. First of all, Nick, this is an just phenomenal job. You have done such a great job leading the charge here, so thank you for meticulously managing those calendars and setting expectations and working so well with the CMO team. Things that I'm really excited about seeing in this budget are our investment in infrastructure, particularly along streets and sidewalks, seeing Spanish interpretation built in for those comms positions, getting our staff up to a livable wage of $15 an hour, a plan for 25th and 26th street corridor plan, and getting code out of CDBG. Those are all things that we've had robust conversations about, so it's exciting to see those reflected. One area of concern I have that I don't see reflected on the budget is on page 153 of the budget, where we talk about housing, which is under community services. It says there's no changes in one-time or recurring expenses for FY '22. And that makes me really concerned because we are still facing ramifications of an economic recession, and we still have so many folks that are really struggling to pay rent and to purchase a home, and the cost of property taxes is rising, the cost of rent is rising, and we don't have enough resources in the community. So a conversation I've had with several people on the dais and with our city staff is I'd love to see a million dollars come from city dollars, whether that's the general fund or capital reserves to support our housing. And I recognize we're in the midst of the housing study, so we may have different opinions up here of the best way to spend that, but I really would like to see that earmarked in city dollars. Something that deputy city manager, Emma said earlier when we were talking about this is it's really hard to take something out of the budget, and so I want to increase this money in housing in our budget because I think the need is only going to increase as our aging housing stock dilapidates over the next couple of years. So that's, that's my only piece of pushback is I know we've had lots of conversation about art money, but I really want us to embody our commitment to housing by putting city dollars to it.
Are there comments or questions?
Josh, are you going or?
Oh, Andrea, I'm so sorry. Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
So, um, thank you, thanks again, Nick and staff for your presentation and commitment to this budget. I mean, it's, it's, when you think about the amount of dollars that funnel in and out of the city, it's, it's, it's no small undertaking. There are a lot of things that my council members have already mentioned, so there's no need for me to beat the proverbial dead horse, echoing sentiments of our advancement and finding place in the budget for our council goals, especially those that address equity. As council member Palmer has stated, we've been working to increase the minimum wage salary of our employees for a long time, and seeing it accomplished is a, it's a good feeling, and it's one that, you know, we are incredibly grateful for you all for finding the way to do it. I mean, it's one thing for us to sit up here and say, hey, these are the things we want done, but it takes staff and time and energy and effort to see it through and finding those dollars that it will take to make it happen. As, also, as the fellow council members have remembered, this is no small elephant to eat. And I want to see that there are ways in the future, so I know that, that the budget is available online, the budget is available at the libraries. Is, is there a way to make, present some option in small soundbites of specific entities in the budget specifically to our city that may, you know, be super top-of-mind important? Like, for instance, you know, what the tax rate reduction actually means to them? Is there a way that we can, you know, present some sort of document that would address that in, in actual dollars? You know, and just because I think, you know, I'm always about the communication, what are the ways to make sure that, and I know several, several of us are posting and sharing on social about what these things mean, but I also want to make sure that we have a, a way available in office or in our public spaces that people could go and find that information to break it down and, and in a, in smaller, more palatable bites. Also, I appreciate the use of, because of, of our impact fees. I know that getting to the process of the fees itself was a challenge because, you know, no one wants to pay any additional fees, but we all understand that, you know, there is cost with growth, and, and how we fund that growth is important as the growth itself. The goals we have set, you know, we are, we are a big-thinking, high-vision council and have been for several years now, and we know that those visions have price tags on them. And so we are, I, you know, let me speak for myself, I appreciate the way staff has come up with addressing those costs. Lastly, and this is so superficial, however, I do want to applaud whoever the design team was for the, the budget. Let me just say that in, you know, I am a native Wacoan, and in the six years that I've been back, one of the things that you, you hear, and not just because of any one entity, but you know, the, the revitalization and the renaissance of Waco and seeing these colors and the murals and the bright, the brightness on the front of this is just absolutely reflective of our city. You know, it is an energy. It is vibrant, and those are the things that are reflective in a almost 600-page document full of numbers that would make anybody go cross-eyed, but it does lead us to the fact that we are that vibrant city. And, you know, the things that it takes to keep us there and make us there are reflective in this document, so I'm grateful and I appreciate the hard work of staff, you and staff.
To follow up on council member Bearfield's comment, I think the inclusion on the budget cover of the hard hat photo, so many people have said that I obviously had a background in construction, and I just want to affirm that, that I, obviously naturalistic looking photo there. I, I too want to applaud the city manager's office and Paul and Nick and your teams for putting this together. I think that obviously this is a budget that prioritizes infrastructure and. I think that, obviously, this is a budget that prioritizes infrastructure and public safety and so many other quality services that our city has, that delivers and will continue to deliver at a high, high quality. I also am hopeful that we will continue to support our economic development efforts after a wonderful year of economic development success, and I'm, I'm very excited with many members of my fellow council members here with the fifteen-dollar minimum for our city employees, which I think will help to retain and continue to attract the high quality of employees that we've enjoyed here at the city and continue to make the city of Waco a premier employer here in central Texas. I wanted to thank, thank all of you for your good work on this.
I won't be long. I don't want to say anything in addition to what my fellow council members have said, but Nick, Paul, congratulations on an outstanding year on presenting this budget. I will say I am so happy, not that I've been on council a long time, but the years that I've been here, this is the first time that I've seen that the actual expenditures are aligned to council goals, and that makes me feel so good because I know that's something that we've been asking for, for many years, and, or for a few years, I should say, and so to see that staff is taking the goals and the objectives of council and what is important to us and what we want to see in the city and that you are tying an actual item with the price tag on it, just, I just want to commend you on that, you know, for the fact that coming out of a pandemic, mind you, this is a year that we're coming out of a worldwide pandemic, that we can offer a tax reduction, no increase in water wastewater, wastewater or solid waste, increase our employee minimum wage to fifteen dollars, a three percent general salary increase for our employees, an additional holiday of Juneteenth for our employees, and still millions of dollars being invested in economic development, infrastructure, and making sure that our city is sustainable. And keep in mind, we have a healthy reserve as well, just speaks volumes to the type of strategic work not only council but staff has put into this. And so I agree with Councilmember Hope, Holmes, most cities would want this type of, to be in this type of, of situation, and so I do appreciate the tenacity and the intensity because I know that there's been intense conversations going, circling around budget. Like Councilmember Borderu, I will say, I would like to see what we can do to push a little bit more on economic development. Not saying that it has to be in the millions, but I do because we have seen the fruit and the benefit of putting money into ED, what that type of more investment can generate for us. But other than that, I will say thank you for just making this so easy to read, and I hope that the people that are watching this at home or watching this via our website or even through social media, that you will get involved in the budget process and let your council members know what are important to you and what are things that you want to see included in future budgets. But for those that have reached out, thank you. I hope you know that we're listening to you. This budget is a representation of what's important to you, we want to spend our dollars on, and so once again, kudos to staff and thank you for the work that you've done over this.
I agree. I mean, so many great things have been said, so I agree to the, the thanks to staff, like I mentioned, and again, a lot to digest. We just received this, although we've been participating in the process of putting this together, but definitely have some, some work to do to tackle it all. One question I had, and I share Councilmember Palmer's question about housing because it is something we've talked about a lot and taken very seriously, but I know that we've also talked about ARP and utilizing those fundings for that. So Bradley or Paul or Nick, I don't know if you wanted to touch on kind of some of the strategies around that or why your recommendation at this point is to, to have that, have it displayed as, as it is now.
Sure. I'll take a, take a stab at it, and Paul, if you want to jump in after me. Certainly, as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, the, the housing study is well underway. You know, we got the interim report at a recent council meeting, and that was kind of a dominating factor in the timeline in terms of putting dollars into the budget for housing is I would like to see the recommendations from that study so that we can get a sense of what tools is it anticipating we might want to use, what options are in play. Certainly, the general fund could be one of them. Other funding sources or even other entities that we already have established could be other methods. I know other cities, a couple of other cities around Texas have used bond financing for housing, for creative housing programs. So I, I, in my mind, before we put dollars towards it, I wanted to see the housing study. I believe we're looking at an October-November timeline for those recommendations coming back to the council. Additionally, I, on housing, certainly was pleased we were able to move the CDBG money out of code compliance, and on your agenda tonight, of course, that'll go towards affordable housing site development, which will give us a resource that, while not reflected necessarily in the Housing Department's budget, a tool to use to, to bring affordable housing within this budget to, to Waco. In terms of ARP, I fully anticipate, as we've talked about in the past, and I'm sure I'm on a short lease, lease here on ARP, Jennifer, is that right? I fully anticipate of, of the four to five buckets we create to, to utilize ARP, that housing will be one of those buckets and will receive considerable resources under the American Rescue Plan. But again, I want that to be guided by the housing study and the recommendations within it.
When do we anticipate having access to those funds and that discussion to take place?
Well, ARP, we have access to the funds. Oh, getting the microphone out. Why don't we update you at the budget and audit meeting on the tenth? That be good?
Yes, and I was just going to add, that would be great, but also I was going to add is that the regulations have not been finalized for ARP spending yet, which is part of why in most cities it's sitting in an account.
The one thing I did want to not forget, and I think, Mayor, you mentioned it earlier, is that when we, some of the things that we've already addressed regarding housing have just been done from many folks, staff, council, looking for other options and other buckets of money to speak and address to the concerns that we have, and I think that that's one of the things that we have always done and probably will always do, whether it be council members at conferences and having conversations with HUD folks and then LED money shows up, and, I mean, though, and, and council members finding grants that, that, that speak to some of the need, I mean, not council members, but staff finding grants. So those are the things that we always, you know, let's, let us never forget those as well.
Yeah, Councilmember, that's a great point. I mean, three years ago or four years ago, we didn't have the, the LED rehabilitation resources that are, that are shown on this agenda today, and I, I think housing, in my mind, and I think in the minds of our CMO team, is not like streets that is going to only be funded by us as a city entity. Housing is a resource that requires the stacking up of multiple dollar sources and entities and, and even nonprofits and foundational support to really make it work. It's going to take a full team effort, and so I think that's, I, I really believe that's what the housing study is going to say. I think that's going, they're going to find models that, that support that approach, and, and I think, Councilmember, your, your comments point to that for sure from a federal angle.
I, I just think that there's a lot of community interest around this right now, and that's from every corner of the community. I was able to hear a presentation that Clint Peters gave to the Waco Association of Realtors who also are feeling the weight of just the, the housing market, and, and so I think the efforts that this city has been making over the last five years that are significant, I think there's a real powerful story to tell there on some of the stuff we've done and been doing, and I'd be interested in, in tracking with that as we, as we're engaging in this discussion and as we move forward. And then as well, I think it's going to be, you know, because of this interest around this, it is going to be important to get, I think, some clarity around what we can anticipate for, from the ARP. I, I do look forward to the housing study and the suggestions that will come from that and, and think that, that seems to make good sense, but really, I, I, it would be nice to be able to have a conversation about ARP and what we can kind of anticipate sooner than later because I think that that will hopefully give citizens peace that we are taking this budget, this component of, of community interest seriously. I mean, I, I know if regulations haven't been issued, that, that might be challenging, but I think that it could be a valuable discussion to have, if possible, but believe that, that will be an incredible funding source for us to do even more things that we haven't done before in the days ahead. I, I just want to say that, you know, when I look at this budget, it just embodies, I think, what this council is about, what the city is about, what our staff team is about, and it shows that I, I really believe this budget represents that Waco is the best and brightest city in the country. With infinite opportunity, a growing economy, and an exceptional quality of life, we've got a lot of work to do, and we've got a lot to figure out about how to make it even better, but I believe this budget and what's in it represents really bright days ahead. And I'm so thankful for this team, this council team, this staff team, and then our community members too, that, that have helped us get it to this point and would echo the invitation that's been given to our public to also be a part of the team. This is a public budget, and we look forward to the public weighing in on what's important to you. We've done our best to this point, and there's still some more for us to do up here too, but the public can weigh in as well. So I'm excited because I believe with all my heart that the future is bright in Waco, and I think that there is some providence over that, but I also think there's some wisdom and strategy that has come from leadership that I've been so blessed to get to sit alongside, so I'm thankful for that and look forward to getting this budget across the finish line. So thank you, Bradley and Paul, and Nick, and everyone else.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and just in terms of cleanup here, I want to, again, thank you for your compliments and, and want to, again, thank Nick publicly. I just can't tell you how hard it is to, to come to a city in April of a, of budget preparation year, particularly a city in a different state, and, and do what he's done. So I want to certainly thank Nick publicly and his team have done a great job. I want to echo what Bradley said earlier, it certainly helps us as staff to put together a budget when we have clear direction from council and we have strategic goals that outline where you want to go. And then from a staff perspective also to have, you know, City Manager align himself with those goals and then give us clear instruction on where he wants to go. So all of that together works well in process, and, and one thing I'll say is another City Manager worked for one time said, now it's your budget. The City Manager's recommended it and proposed it to you, and, and so now it's ultimately yours, and we look forward to working with you over the next few weeks to refine what we need to, where we need to, and, and Jim and Kelly with your, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holmes and Councilmember Palmer. Yeah, so you have a lot of tabs in your book, and if you want to share those with us at any point, we'd be glad to respond to those and the rest of the council as well. If you have comments or questions in detail about the budget, we'd be glad to respond to those, and then certainly over the next few weeks as we're working with you in the budget and audit meeting. So thank you for, for your support, and we look forward to working with you on your budget and getting it adopted at the proper time.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul. And I think we've got one more presentation. I think Cody Patillo's been waiting patiently in the wings to give us an update on solid waste residential route adjustments. I see Mr. Doudal two. Hey Chuck, good to see you.
Yes, sir. I think I mostly can't, but I did want to give a, where we, where we got to this point. So the good news is Waco just has this incredible growth, Highway eighty-four, China Springs, amazing stuff, but we began to discover within our operational group, the collection group, that they were working many long hours, sometimes until nine and 10 o'clock at night on Mondays and Fridays, and it created some service equities amongst our customers. So sometimes the customer wouldn't get his trash picked up until the following day, and, and so that was providing some customer service issues to us. So Mr. Patillo came on board, and he was tasked with looking at operational efficiencies, and I'd have to say he enthusiastically jumped into this, and he's worked with his collection groups and teams, and he's got a really good story to tell. So without any further ado, I'll give the stage to him.
Thank you, Chuck. So like Chuck mentioned, we are going to be discussing the proposed residential route adjustments. We're going to talk about three things. Why we need to change, highlight the impacted areas, and to review our communication plan, which is essentially our most important aspect of this process. So as Chuck mentioned, the residential growth. As we've seen residential growth in the Highway eighty-four West Corridor, China Springs, Ritchie Road area, we're seeing that on Mondays and Fridays specifically, we're really reaching our operational capacity, which is about eleven thousand stops per day. So our, our average or our normal working hours are four 10-hour days, Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. That's for our residential, and we do have a small five-day-a-week crew. So what we're seeing now is on Monday and Friday, we're averaging thirteen to fourteen hours, and as I think this past New Year's Eve, our residential crews were out, they were picking up on New Year's Eve about 10, 10:00 PM, and that's due to some of these issues with the, with our operational capacity. So at any point where we're having any type of mechanical or personnel issues like Chuck mentions, there are certain days where we don't finish those routes and we have to dip into the next Tuesday or the next Saturday to finish it out, and that's confusing for our customers, and it's also very taxing on our residential collection staff because, you know, are you going to get off at seven or are you going to get off at 10? Like I said, it's confusing, and so with these, with these proposed changes, we are looking to increase our, our efficiencies, our operations, and improve the quality of life for our staff, our collection staff. So for our proposed solution, we are looking to redistribute about thirty-eight hundred accounts or stops. If you look on the right, you'll see a chart, and the blue is the current, the orange is the proposed. You can see that Monday and Friday are very close to our operational capacity, eleven thousand, and then Tuesday and Thursday are, are a little bit lighter. So we're really wanting to spread, I guess you could say, spread the love throughout the week, and we're going to add, we want to add a little bit more to Wednesday. Wednesday is traditionally our catch-up day, and I'll talk to that in just a little bit, but, and you'll see Friday is still heavy, but that's something that we, we can handle. We're, we're used to that load, and that, that won't be too big of a deal. We're, with, with these changes, we're opening up for future growth in these areas as well. So with the route adjustments, we will have impacts to District One, District Four, and District Five. For Wednesdays, we're still going to utilize those for our catch-up days. Right now, we have about six hundred accounts on there or six hundred stops. We're going to, we're going to bump those numbers up quite a bit, and, and we're going to balance out the week. So our strategy here is we're used to having fifty-two long Mondays and fifty-two long Fridays throughout the year. So now, moving these routes to Wednesdays, Wednesday, if we have holidays that, that go to these during those, you know, those twelve holidays that we have throughout the year, now we know that we're, we're going to have twelve weeks where they're going to be booger bears, and that's, but we know it. That Wednesday's going to be tough, our crews are ready, we can schedule our vacation time to where we're not, we're not around that and really attack that and create some operational efficiencies. So with this plan, we would like to implement this the week of October fourth, which would give us about two months to really hammer on some communication outreach with the impacted customers, which we will talk about later in the slide. So now we will cover the, the areas of impact. So this is the, we'll go, we'll go by these by day. Monday, the Highway eighty-four West Corridor, we are proposing to move these from Monday to Wednesday, and any future growth would stay with that Wednesday. We wouldn't create a new route on a, on a separate day, they'll stay with that Wednesday. For District One, this is the TSTC area, this used to be a couple of thousand accounts with all the construction going on, it's, they've, they've reduced that to about six hundred, and, and so we do anticipate some, some growth in the future, but nothing that we can't handle, especially with it being our Tuesday. For Friday, this is, the majority of this is in District Four, we have a small portion in District Five, about seventeen homes. We are looking to move these from Friday to Thursday, and this was really the cornerstone of our strategy for route adjustments because this area is landlocked, there's not going to be an exponential, exponential amount of residential growth in these areas. So that, like I said, that was really the cornerstone. Here's an overview of our, of our days that we're looking at for the District Four. District One and District Five areas, those are kind of islands, but you can see with this District Four and this small part of District Five, we're really just pushing out our, the borders of our out our, the borders of our collection days. Where it was Friday, now we're pushing it out to, now Thursday's eating up a little bit more. So if you look at the red line, you'll see that, that's the council borders. Just for y'all's information, our collection days don't exactly marry up to the council borders. Quite a few districts have multiple collection days in their areas. So for summary of impacted homes, District One is about, is 600, District Four is a little over 1,000 and District Five is a little over 2,100 with a total of 3,767 homes impacted. So now for our most important part of this process, the outreach strategy. We have two different types of outreach. We have our digital outreach and our direct outreach to the impacted customers. And our, let's see, Ashley Miller, our new staff member that we stole from Keep Waco Beautiful, put this plan together and she did a fantastic job. We are, we, you know, that's one of the, the good steals we've had, I think, in this department and probably the city. So we'll talk about our.
It's not stealing, it's acquiring.
Acquiring, acquiring talent. Okay. So we'll start with our digital outreach. First, we'll start with Waco curbside, curbside app. We have about 4,300 downloads the last time we checked. And so if anybody, if those people that have signed up have put in their address and they signed up for notifications or reminders, that's automatically going to be sent to them if they're on that routes. We have the availability to isolate it by route. We'll be working with Dory and her, the social media team with Facebook and Instagram. I think a big thing there is, you know, we're only impacting a little bit less than 10% of our residential customer base. So any information we push on a mass media platform, we want to make sure that it's concise, it's clear and it doesn't confuse the other 90% that their day's not changing. So we want to make sure that, you know, we, we keep that information clear. We'll be updating our solid waste webpage, which gets quite a few hits throughout the year. People like to know when their trash is going to get picked up and then where to go if it doesn't get picked up. And then also working with the neighborhood associations. So for our direct outreach.
Social, before you go forward, social media can be targeted by streets, is that right?
I am not sure, but luckily we have Dory and Ashley that can help us navigate that.
All right.
For direct outreach, and this is really the, the bread and butter of how we're going to get to our customers that are impacted. First, we'll start off with postcard mailers. We've already worked with municipal information and developed what these are going to look like. And so we'll be sending these to the physical addresses 30 days before. So our goal is to get them mailed out by Labor Day. These are in English and Spanish. And then for our next, our next big item is cart tags, cart stickers. We already utilize this strategy for, say if your, if your neighbor left your cart out too long and you've complained or say the brush pile's too big, we'll put these cart tags on your cart to let you know that, hey, there's an issue, here's the information. If you need more, call us. And again, these are in English and Spanish already. Anna Dunbar, before she left, gave us this great idea to get some community engagement, the block captains. So we'll be reaching out to members in the community for these routes, seeing if we can get some volunteers for block captains. We actually already have one volunteer that has so graciously decided to join us. Councilman, council member Palmer will be our first block captain and we'll, we'll add some more as we go through, especially once we start meeting with these neighborhood associations. That's going to be, give us a good, get in front, get in front, face to face and get us to get some people on board. With our billing system, we already have contact information in there. So we'll be making phone calls to the impacted customers. Now, majority of the time, this contact information is not up to date. So it's not going to be our most successful tool, but it's another tool in our toolbag to get out and get in touch with folks. We have bilingual folks on our team that can provide that service as well. And if I haven't mentioned, all of our communication will be in English and Spanish. We will be coordinating with our neighborhood engagement team, Mellette Harrison and her team. So Dean Highland and the Highway 84 Corridor are the two neighborhood associations. We are already on schedule to meet with them in September, assuming that we still have those in, in face meetings. And then we've already talked with TSD Student Housing and we'll, we'll continue communication. They've already provided us with an address list and they're going to help us get that word out on their side. So a last thing is putting your cart out is, it's a routine change. You don't think about it until the night before or the morning of, where you walk out your door and you see your neighbor's trash can and you're late to work and you're trying to figure out what to do or you missed it. So that's a big thing is we're going to work with the customers that are impacted over the following weeks after we implement this to let them know that, you know, here you missed your day, here we, we're going to pick it up. We anticipate a few long weeks, but, but we're, we want to provide the level of service that has been come, as expected of the solid waste department and the city of Waco. So with that, I will open it up to any questions or discussion.
I'll just jump in here. Cody, great presentation as always. I just, I think this speaks to everything we talked about today as far as budget. We're trying to deliver best-in-class services here. And then the frosting on the cake to me is the operational efficiency that we're, that we're, that we're dovetailing into the solution with good metrics, geoplaning and figuring out how this works. And I think the ripple effect of this is, I think we're going to, improvement in maintenance of those trucks because we're not running them, you know, 12, 14 hours a day. Employee morale's got to improve, you know, because they're not out there all, all day on Friday night. And I think citizen confidence that they know they're, better chance of it getting picked up when you're, you're decreasing the per day load. So I, just a brilliant solution. The communication strategy also, an important part of this because that's, that's one big thing. If trash is out there, and I know that council, at least that's one of the regular, if it's not picked up on time, I hear about it, everybody hears about it. But giving folks the heads up, I think is an important part of it, that you've got a great communication strategy here. Does it make sense, and I didn't see it directly, maybe it was indirectly, but I'm, I'm still old fashioned, I like to open up that water bill every month. Should we stick one in there as well?
So we are talking with the utility department on how to do that. We'll have to get creative because they're on different routes and cycles than what solid waste is. So we are in communication with them and we're, we're going to do our best effort to, to accomplish that.
Great. Good job.
Cody, you're clearly the right person for this job. I've never heard someone get so excited about solid waste before. So thanks for being patient and keeping your energy up. I'm really thrilled to be a block captain. Sorry that y'all's routes aren't changing and you're not in the center of the action, but really appreciate.
It goes.
Yeah. Stay tuned on social media. But I'm excited just how clear and consistent this is. I think the messaging is really great. I love what Holmes was saying, just in terms of employee morale. I think with us increasing pay and doing steps like this, this shows our entire workforce that we are thinking of them and we're taking proactive steps to make sure that their work is sustainable. So thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Ain't this just what city government is about? Because ultimately, so many people aren't going to care about so much of this stuff in our budget if their trash ain't getting picked up right and on time. So I think, I'm so thankful for your strategy, your thoughtfulness, this is a great plan and really excited about it. And real quick, what is your sell that we can give to the public in case of trash? Cody, thanks so much. We really appreciate this great plan. Chuck, great to see you guys and we look forward to getting this rolled out.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I believe that's the last work session, is that right?
Bradley?
And are there requests for any future agenda items?
Mayor Meek, I do have one. With the conversations around housing and also I think on, well, on our agenda today, we were talking about some houses that have been rehabbed and how the city has helped with that rehabilitation and the lead-based paint program. I would like an update or a follow-up or I would even honestly like a council presentation about our lead-based paint program, what that looks like, how it started, where we're currently at, where we plan to be in the next two or three years, the federal funds that we've received for that as well, you know, as, as council member Bearfield mentioned earlier. I would like a, a work session on that. So if, if staff could do me that favor, please.
Will do.
I've got another housing-related work session. I'd love to see, city manager Ford, you referenced that housing needs to be tackled by multiple partners. And so once we do have the housing plan and the findings back, I'd love for us to convene all of those people at the table, bring the foundations, bring the for-profit, the nonprofit developers and have a very strategic, multi-pronged plan of attack of how are we doing funding? How are we doing incentives? What are we doing for emergency transitional, long-term housing? Because we've got to put our money where our mouth is and we have to bring everybody to the table.
Completely agree.
That might even be like a real, like a special roundtable, like separate from a work session, like have a, almost a housing retreat with all the stakeholders or something like that.
Okay.
I, I agree. I think that's a great idea. Any other future agenda items? We will recess the work session then at 5:30. There's no executive session, so we will convene in 30 minutes. Everybody's got a 30-minute break. So we'll see you at 6:00, everybody.